Great, good evening. I call this meeting to order at 5:32. I'll start off with the attendance. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Here.
Councilmember Capaldi?
She is here though.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Hul?
Here.
Vice President Verducci?
Here.
All right, let's stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
That's one, two.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our evacuation plan for this evening, if shall be, you can head out that door out to the front, otherwise head out these two side doors through the back, to the back lawn area. We're going to start off with executive session tonight. We're going to take a vote to go into executive session. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
A second.
All right, and to clarify, this is going to be an executive closed session pursuant to RIGL 4246-5A1, discussions of job performance, character, physical or mental health of a person, a person specifically for the council to consider candidates for the town solicitor position. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes. Thank you.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
And first and second, any discussion?
And first and second, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
All right, I will entertain a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, madam clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
All right, the Coventry Town Council convened an executive session, and no votes were taken on the matter posted under item A, executive or closed session. All right, moving on, the next agenda item. We have some meeting minutes. The agenda item has executive session minutes. We got an update, those are incomplete at the moment, so we're just going to focus on July 16th, July 22nd, and August 26th, open session meeting minutes. We could entertain a motion to vote these in a block.
Just comment, Mr. President.
Okay, any comments, changes, edits?
I have to abstain from July 16th or July 22nd, so as a block would just be, I could abstain from all of it, but I was here for the August 26th one.
Do them single, all right. All right, I'll take a motion then on July 16th, 2025, open session meeting minutes. Motion to pass those minutes.
Take a motion, accept the minutes.
Councilman Pasqua, second by Councilwoman Capaldi, any discussion? Hearing none, madam clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Abstain.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Four in the affirmative, one abstention, motion passes.
Right, I'll entertain a motion for July 22nd, 2025, open session minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, we have a second, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, madam clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Abstain.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Four in the affirmative, one abstention, motion passes.
All right, in our last set of meeting minutes, August 26th, 2025, open session, do I have a motion?
Make motion.
Motion from Councilman Brown?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Hul, any discussion? Hearing none, madam clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi? Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
All right, up next on tonight's agenda is public comment for docketed items. Anybody in the room who would like to come up? Please come on up, raise your hand, and approach that. We're trying something different tonight, we have our shot clock up here. This is going to be subject of a discussion as to how long the clock will last. However, we are just looking to give a basic guideline around four minutes. Some people may want a little more. It's really just going to be up to discretion of the council members and, you know, as long as you're on topic and making a valid point, we don't want to shut anybody off right as the time expires, but just to help us all be a little cognizant of the time. Thank you very much for jo-- oh, councilman.
We haven't heard it yet, so, she said it's loud, so don't get scared. We don't know, know that thing, we don't know what it sounds like. Oh, I won't be four minutes.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Cheryl Kane, 185 East Schoolhouse Road. The reason why I'm here is I'm questioning the ordinance for the town council that you're going to be going over tonight, it's 2025-22. It appears that all of the responsibilities that were given to the zoning enforcer, when she became the ex-zoning enforcer, has now been taken away from her in the building inspector, and they're going back to the planning director like they were years ago? Do I understand that correctly? Is Doug here?
Doug?
Okay, well, that's what it appears to be, it's just basically just giving all the responsibilities back to the people previously before. Okay, that's all I want to say, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And if pay is going to be decreased or increased with the responsibilities that were taken away or increased too?
Yeah, we're going to have them up.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Cheryl. All right, I'm looking at this side of the room. Sure, you can come on up? No, this is docketed.
Hey, docketed, you're undocumented. Yes. We'll let you know.
Anybody else on docketed items? In the room? All right, if anybody on Zoom is looking to make a comment on docketed items, please raise your hand. No? All right, one more time in the room? All right, just want to make sure. All right, that closes public comment on docketed items. Also going to now move to public hearing. Matters for public hearing, first up, we have a ordinance number 2025-2022, amendment to the Town of Coventry Code of Ordinances. This falls under Part II, General Legislation, Chapter 255, Article 3, Admin and Enforcement. Do we have someone coming up to speak on this?
Make a motion, open public hearing.
Oh, that's what we're looking for. Thank you. Second, do we have any discussion on the public hearing? All right.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
And I'd like to welcome anybody to talk about this ordinance before we get into it. Mr. Solicitor?
You might want to incorporate the young lady who spoke on that in public comment into the public hearing comment because it's directly related to the ordinance. How we just incorporate those comments? We're in public hearing on that particular ordinance, if you want to come up and be on the record and speak on it, and maybe the planning director as well on this. This is the time to do it.
I was just saying that--
Yeah, thank you.
Cheryl, come on up.
Happy to be a resource to the ordinance.
Thank you. So, yeah, Ms. Kane had some questions in there, you know, I think I have some and maybe some other folks up here, just kind of general questions on the ordinance changes and how we got here.
Okay, what I see here is basically all of the duties that were given to the zoning enforcer when they created the position and the building inspector. It's not the building, well, for the building inspector also, I think Anthony Nardolillo will be getting some of these responsibilities also. It just looks basically what they're doing is just reverting back to what was years ago. They're playing with the words a little bit. Now, the planning director will be able to appoint the zoning enforcer to do certain things instead of just it being separate, they're just keeping it together. So basically, I think that everyone's going to be doing the same job. Responsibility is the same. But they're still not doing their job. So that's what I come back to. We need to enforce our zoning ordinances. I'm not going to get into that, but this is what just basically he's doing is just, just playing with words. I want people to be accountable, responsible for their duties. That's what I need to know. And what's going to happen, is this gonna, are we going to make this happen? Are we going to enforce our ordinances?
I have a question for Doug. Why did you guys, what is the intent of these changes that look like there really aren't changes?
There's a couple of small things that are happening, and I think that's a fair question. At the end of the day, one thing that's happening is the zoning ordinance is making it clear who does serve as the town zoning enforcement officer. The previous ordinance declares there are certain duties that should happen, but it doesn't assign it to any position. So the idea that me as the planning director could have said, I think that that's a zoning violation, someone could say, there's nothing in your capacity as the planning director that gives you the authority to make that determination, you're not the CEO. So this makes it clear, it also makes it clear that I can delegate those abilities because historically, the town always did deal with the number of different things a zoning enforcement officer does. It dealt with them, some of them were always historically done by the planning director, some of them were historically done by our zoning clerk, who does a lot of the hands-on enforcement and site visits and the day-to-day stuff, so. But really, we were taking one position, one set of authorities, and we were just kind of assigning them to people, and they were doing them because it was just always part of their job. This is formalizing it so that as we get into any heady zoning enforcement, we know that the code indicates who has these authorities and how it works. While we were going through this code, we did some cleanup just to catch up with new state law and make sure that everything that's in this code is completely consistent with the authorities and the roles that state law gives us.
Thank you for that. Follow-up question. Really, all that I know about zoning and in particular the people that you are mentioning in this document is in regard to Cheryl Kane's issues? And I know that a lot of those people have been on the emails. So are you saying that all the people that current, that did have the job before this still have the job? And are they, will they, will you be the person holding them accountable to do what they're supposed to be doing?
Yeah, there's nothing in this ordinance that actually changes the day-to-day roles and responsibilities we've always had. The planning director has always done code interpretation. I've always, the planning director position historically has always written zoning certificates. Some of those are duties that state law only ascribes that this position entitled a zoning enforcement officer can provide. Historically, Carrie would always do the on-the-ground site visits. There's a violation, you know, someone has a camper in their front yard, whatever the number of violations that might exist in the town. This is just memorializing the roles that have always existed in the town so that if anyone asks us, what gives you the authority or the right to take on these different actions? It's here in zoning, we don't have to question, is Carrie have this authority? Do I have this authority? Or does it belong with some other position in the town?
I do believe that's written somewhere that she was appointing zoning enforcer. There is documentation somewhere.
Yeah, she was, but it was like a personnel action. So imagine that Carrie was given the job title zoning enforcement officer, but it was--
The planning director?
I think it was through the town manager's office, but at the end of the day, it wasn't a power that was vested in her through the code. It was basically giving someone a business card and saying, you know, go ahead and start working, but the council didn't voice or the code didn't voice, who, what position gets to hold that authority? And so now it's doing that and it's making it clear. So if we get into a zoning enforcement action, the first thing an opponent to that would say is, what gives you the right to make those opinions? And we would say, at this point, we don't have a record that gives me the right to make those opinions.
I do have a follow-up question to that. And it's in regards to this conversation that we're having. And I don't know legally if I can do this, can I make a motion right now?
I have something else to say. I want to make them--
Yeah. Yeah, we're on--
And then when the public hearing is concluded and closed, councilman, then it's to the council's discretion to make motions at that time.
So I have to wait for everyone to talk regarding this subject?
Absolutely.
Wait till after the subject?
Can I just make one statement?
Sure.
Okay. My statement is, why would the town of Coventry, whoever appointed a zoning official to be the zoning enforcer, why would you give a person that title without reading the documentation to be a zoning official? I was applying for the zoning, I was applying for the permit technician at zone, across the street at Public Works. Not at Public Works, I'm not a good speaker when it comes in front of all you guys. I'm better off on the telephone and talking in. But at building inspection department, I applied for that position. I had to read the zoning official, all the ordinances. I had to read the building inspection ordinances. I read the planning, I read everything. And I don't understand why you would, why you would appoint someone to zoning enforcer when they, you didn't even have them read that documentation or take a test. So that's what I'm saying, you, this, all these years that this person has had that position in this town has really felt the pain of it. As you drive around through Coventry, you have seen what our appearance has been. It's, I mean, I would never buy a house in Coventry right now, never, I would never, ever, because nothing is enforced. If I'm going to buy a house for $800,000 and then someone next door to me can open up a doggy daycare or some kind of a business with a salvage yard, junkyard, they could have, they could have cars towed there all day long. I'm sorry, don't come to Coventry, go somewhere else, thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Doug.
Any other? Nope. Councilman Brown?
Yeah, thank you. With speaking with the planning director, we have several issues going on in town that really needs this position appointed to a person directly. This ordinance is needed big time in this town. It really appoints the planning director as that person to enforce it. And like I said, we have things going on in town that now it'll be taken care of because it's going to go to that, the planning director to get it done. So I 100% agree that this ordinance should be adopted tonight because it's a good ordinance with, and going to have the teeth in it that we're going to get enforcement done correctly.
Thank you, councilman.
So, from my understanding of what you're trying to do is just tighten up the legality portion of it. Because if someone takes you to court after you've sent a violation, it's, if they have a good attorney, the attorney's going to question your authority, you don't have any standing to file that because you didn't, you weren't granted that power by the town. So all you're doing here is not only identifying who's responsible so you can hold individuals responsible for their individual actions, but it's the legal portion of it that you're also cleaning up on the backend. The people are not changing, their roles are being identified more clearly, and the authority is going to be granted to them to enforce their rules.
100% correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I'd just like to say, I was going along with Councilman Brown, I think this actually encourages that responsibility, and it can't be hidden behind any bureaucratic loopholes of, you know, that's not officially codified yet, so that's what we're doing here. I think we understand on that. Any other questions, comments from the council? All right, hearing none? Oh, sorry, yeah, it looks like we have a hand up on Zoom. Thank you. Come on in, unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Anthony Nardolillo, Ken Colby Drive. I just want to bring up a couple of issues. Number one, similar with zoning, I've been kind of appointed as the minimum housing person. However, per the property maintenance code, my boss is actually the code enforcement officer, so any action I take is done through him. And it seems like that's what Director McLean is trying to do because I don't think it's spelled out in the zoning regulations as well. And just one comment about people not doing their job. I responded to every email from Mrs. Kane that she's ever sent. I just wanted to make sure that was on record. I actually responded to Mr. Hul this morning for any minimum housing complaints. I just wanted that to be known.
And I appreciate that, I appreciate all the work you do. Thank you very much. All right. Anybody else on Zoom over there, Cody? All right, thank you. One more time in the room since we're at it, public comment? Right. Do we have a motion on this ordinance? All right, we'll close the hearing. You guys want to do it?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
All right, now back on the ordinance.
Motion to approve ordinance number 2025-22.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown, a second from Councilman Hul, any further discussion? Right, hearing none, madam clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda, we had a license, oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Capaldi?
Can I do my motion now?
I think councilman, it depends on what the motion is.
Everyone that-- Everyone that we're, everything that we're talking about right now with Doug and Cheryl Kane, there have been issues in zoning. I would like to put it on the, a quick, a future agenda, not too long, but maybe the next couple of meetings, that we can all talk about what has happened, what is needed because this email, everything gets lost in emails. Cheryl has been very consistent, thank you Cheryl, in your, your issues. We just need to know Doug has been very compliant to you and giving you what you needed and asking you for certain things. Thank you for that, Doug. But I think things are getting lost in translation and I would like everyone to get together on an agenda and we could talk it through. So that's my motion.
Do that without a motion.
Oh.
Yeah. Just put it on the next agenda or-
I'm not sure if Mr. Agliozzi has caught up on all of the, I think there's also maybe a proceeding that's happened and I wouldn't want to-
Do you know Assistant Town Manager? I know, I know Cheryl may know, but it's, it's not, they were supposed to be in court and now it's in a planning meeting, her neighbors in regard to this issue? Doug, do you know? It's an appeal for what?
Hold on.
It's, they're appealing the citation.
Hold on, we got-
I don't want to get into details because the specific property that may be being discussed is not on an agenda.
Yeah.
But I can tell you that we're aware there are proceedings for an appeal of a building official determination. So it's not, actually, it's not a zoning enforcement action similar to what you just did. The appeal is related to a building official determination of whatever may be the property in question. I think to bring it for a future agenda, I mean, there are local proceedings and there is, that there is a home for the determination on that appeal. I don't know what would be proper, but my suggestion is offline. We'll have conversations with the staff or David in terms of if you want to facilitate a conversation, how can we do that without pointing to a property that may be under-
Understood.
The proceedings.
Thank you very much.
Can we, can we put that in an executive session then?
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
We agree on the direction of where this needs to go. We'll just make sure we do it properly.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Councilwoman Capaldi. Let's see, what else we got? All right, so getting back on the agenda, we did have an application for a new license. However, that has been pulled and hopefully it will appear at a later date, which then takes us to item six. We have an election, our appointment of town officials. We've got a couple of different appointments to make tonight. We're very happy to see the involvement that's coming out from the residents here. We appreciate that. First, we had zoning board of review. We had two individuals up for renewal. One is not able to make it, but I do believe we can, we can still vote on his appointment. In the meantime, we also have Russell Lacalade. I don't know if he's here tonight. No, okay. All right, so at least for the zoning board of review, I'll leave it up to the council's pleasure. Do we want to have motions and make appointments or a table until they can show up? Councilman Pasqua.
Do we have communication from them and are they still interested in serving on the zoning board?
Yes.
Okay, so then I make a motion to reappoint, it's supposed to be Russ Pelletier? Ron Pelletier, okay. And Russell Lacalade, Ron? Okay. So make a motion to appoint Ron Pelletier and Russell Lacalade.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman Pasqua, a second. Councilwoman Capaldi, any discussion?
Just to clarify, this is for the zoning board of review?
Correct. Yep.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
That's me. Go ahead. Yes.
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
All right, now we also have vacancy on the conservation commission. Ronald Xavier, come on up. State your name and address for the record and- Oh, I think, is your mic on? Is it green?
Ronald Xavier, 42 Penoi Street.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. You've expressed some interest in the conservation commission. Anything you want to say?
No, just looking forward to chipping in with the town instead of just sitting on the sidelines.
Appreciate it.
Get involved, parks and all that stuff, yeah. That's about it.
No, thank you. That's plenty. We appreciate that. We'll take the help. Do we have a motion to appoint?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ronald Xavier to the conservation commission.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. We really appreciate you volunteering for that. Thank you. All right, next item up on the agenda, we have a report of town offices and officials. Tonight, we have our deputy town manager, Maria Broadbent, to discuss the Coventry High School sewer project.
I think you have one more appointment, school building committee?
Yes, I do see that. That was, that's my mistake. All right, school building committee appointment, we have a vacancy on there. Do we have a name?
It looks like it's the same names that we just approved.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, so this one is what we need you guys to volunteer for. I'm sorry, thank you. So basically, we have two members of the school building committee that's appointed by the town council to help them serve, to get the bonds spent, oversee the capital projects that were approved under the bonds. So this one here, we're actually looking for a member of the town council. I'm currently on it myself, so we would take volunteers, I believe. Do we have any volunteers?
I'm interested if Councilman Brown doesn't want it.
All right, we've got a guy. Now we just need a motion to appoint Councilman Hul.
Make that motion. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Councilman Hul directly, do not pass go right now, to the school building committee. Any discussion? You're a good man. Thank you very much, Councilman Hul. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Abstain.
Vice, President Verducci?
Yes.
Four in the affirmative, one abstention. Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much and thanks for reminding me on that one. We will have you added to the email list and the distribution stuff and we just met last week, so I think we're heading for a meeting in another week or two. Thank you very much, Councilman. Now we are on to item number seven, report of town offices and officials. Tonight, we have Assistant Town Manager Maria Broadbent to discuss the Coventry High School Sewer Project.
Good evening, Mr. President.
Good evening.
Members of the council. I just wanted to give folks an update for two reasons. One is it's obvious if you've gone down Tyoga Avenue that we've started construction. And also because I'm trying to give folks forewarning about a traffic detour, we actually broke the record and got 65,000 or more views on Facebook about the traffic detour. So I'm going to start with that because I really want folks to know, was trying as hard as I could to make sure that we were giving folks advance notice, so sent that out a month early. And I just want folks to know that if it's the case that for safety reasons we need a traffic detour, we'll have one. Traffic detail, but the critical times obviously are going to be when the school buses are taking kids to school or picking them up and taking them home. But if, if there's a safety concern, and Chief Witt and I also talked about it this afternoon, if there's a safety concern, we need a detail, we'll have one. That being said, we've now finished about 160 linear feet of the sewer line construction on Tyoga Avenue. And we've put through the bypass to channelize the stream because we're crossing the river there. Believe it or not, you almost don't even notice it because of all of the fragmities that are there. But the Mishnak River actually crosses underneath Tyoga Avenue. And in order to put the pipe under the stream, we have to bypass the river. And the bypass has been done. All the sediment erosion control that keeps the mud and pollution from running off the roadway into the river has been installed. They're going to jump ahead a little bit and start to do the temporary water service installation on Reservoir Road. As part of this project, we are partnered with Kent County Water to also install the water lines on Reservoir Road at the same time our sewer line's being done. So they're going to put the temporary water services in so that when, we have to shut down the construction for the winter because things freeze. You can't dig that deep in the ground when the ground's frozen. So they're going to install the temporary water services when we have to stop for the winter. Once they start in the spring, the temporary water lines will already be there and they can get up and running quickly. We're grateful to the folks from Kent County Water. By them partnering with us, we've avoided having to dig much deeper in the ground. For obvious reasons, sewer lines have to be below water lines. You don't want your sewer lines above your water line. So if we didn't partner with them, we would have had to dig really deep into the ground to get underneath their water, water lines to install our sewer lines. They've got two older water lines that are on Reservoir Road that are the type of water line that they don't necessarily use anymore. They're really brittle and they're very susceptible to being tapped and crushed during construction. So while we're doing our project, the folks that are ratepayers are avoiding having the road dug up twice, mobilizing huge machinery twice, paving curb to curb twice. So the way the project is going now, there'll be a detour through Wood Estates and folks on Wood Estates know a shorter shortcut than the one that we mapped out for folks. That will go on from the middle of November to the middle of December. We'll take a break for the winter and then we'll start up again the 3rd of April and go till the project is done sometime late spring. And then we'll be able to connect the high school and then we'll come back again and do the repaving once all the, you want to wait to pave after all the trenches settle. So we'll wait until all of that settling is done and then we'll pave sometime in August. Happy to answer any questions. I wish I could do something to avoid the detour through Wood Estates. You know, when you design projects the way they used to design them and if you've got a peninsula with only one way in and one way out, traffic is like water, it's going to seek the easiest path. And unfortunately, that's where we are and we will adapt. If there's a safety issue, we will address it.
Do you anticipate any traffic issues during winter shutdown or is that going to be opened back up?
Everything will be fully opened back up.
Gotcha. And then secondly, have we, I don't see anybody from the schools tonight. Is it, you know, helpful to reach out to the kids and do an educational component just so as they're coming and going? I know that adds some traffic from the high school, things like that.
Absolutely helpful. I think Wood Estates has concerns on a regular with the students driving up, up and around through their neighborhood. They have some concerns in general about speeding and had, you know, some requests to look at some different traffic control devices. One of which is speed bumps, which is our policy, we don't do those. But whenever I've had communications related to detours or any of that, those have included the school. The school is also invited to our monthly progress meetings with the contractor and we've had to work very closely with the school to sort of help manage the expectations of West Warwick's pre-treatment inspector because they've put some, you know, sometimes changing, moving target sort of components on things that have to be done on the school property itself to manage grease or any discharge from the hair salon or things that you want to keep out of the sewer before you connect, so.
Very good. Thank you for that. Councilman Brown?
You brought it up, Maria, but I do have a safe concern about safety on Route 3 during those peak times and I hope we address that before something happens. So today they put the detour in place, I think we need a detail in place during those peak hours because that, that's a very busy road. Somebody's going to get T-bone, pull out in front of somebody and it'll, I'd rather be proactive than not do nothing, so.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hul?
I will, I'll second what Councilman Brown said. It's in my notes here. Let's, you know, I wanted to know how often you guys are going to visit the detail need, but I think we, we just do it because these videos are going to be recorded and something's going to happen and we're going to look like we just didn't be proactive on that.
Yeah, and the, and the police department is going to be the best monitor of how safe things are.
Maybe even we put some details in, you know, Wood Estates, like we have to, we're disrupting this, so we've got to kind of mitigate it to some degree, especially on the legal, you know, liability side of it. One of the things that I, I noticed, but I had sent you an email, was the notifications. I want to ensure that the residents of, that are going to be affected once they do switch from temporary to the permanent, that another hand-delivered notice of some sorts will be sent out. You did confirm that with me. I know some people, you know, it's outside of my district, but some people are frustrated with the detours, but I want to, I don't know if you have this information, but how much money have we spent on just the pumping alone at the school?
$620,000.
Okay, that makes me feel really good about a detour, at least for a little while.
We're spending about $900 a day.
Okay, so I think we, yeah, okay. We're moving in the right direction. One of the other things that I had is Kent County Water Authority, I believe it's also one of them, Energy's also in there as well, correct? That was on the next one, sorry. I'll go back up to the top here. Kent County Water, are they sharing any of the cost, whether it be the cost of the detail, the cost of the repaving? I know that we're actually benefiting from them doing their lines. I understand that.
Largely their cost is associated with their water line. Our costs are all being paid for. I was able to get a grant through Senator Reed's office and our costs are being paid for through, they used to call them earmark, it's congressionally directed spending from the EPA through Jack Reed's office.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Pasqua?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate, having the detail there. I mean, we, we went through there with some emergency vehicles today and, you know, it's really tight, not a lot of room over there and it created some pretty good confusion when we were going through there. And we're going through there a dozen times a day. It's a main artery to the western side, so yeah, detail's definitely important.
Councilwoman Capaldi?
I'm at that high school every, almost every day now to pick up my daughter and I do go through Wood Estates to get to where I live. But when the school gets out, it's like traffic in that Wood Estates cut through to Hill Farm or wherever else you're going. Is there, I don't know why the town doesn't believe in speed bumps, but is there like a temporary, something that we could put in that main thoroughfare that everyone cuts through to slow the traffic down? Because it's, it's bad when you're leaving or coming.
I mean, during detour, during a detour, it wouldn't be speed bumps, it'd probably be enforcement.
Then maybe we should do that at peak times.
Speed bumps, look, I just, when I got back from Costa Rica, that's literally, they don't have traffic lights. That's how they control their speed in these municipalities is speed bumps. If, if Wood Estates is dangerous and we have kids walking through these neighborhoods, you know, I don't, I think we should approach an idea about a couple of speed bumps.
I think that's a great idea.
It's the most cost-effective way to minimize speeding.
My, my time on the floor here, I'm not done yet.
Councilwoman Capaldi, please continue.
My question, and I apologize if I missed it. So when you get, when you're coming out of the high school, high school's out, you're behind 1,000 buses, you go into Reservoir Avenue at that light, with this- With this construction happening, is that traffic, are you, are we following the light schedule or is there someone?
We won't be using that light.
Okay.
That won't, because there'll be no traffic coming onto Reservoir Road from Tyoga. Because it'll be closed to a detour unless you are, you live right there.
Okay, I think we really do.
But through, through traffic, if you were coming from Tyoga Avenue to go to the high school, that would not be open for you to come down Reservoir Road. You'd have to go up through.
Coming out of the high school to, taking a right on Reservoir to Tyoga?
Will not be an option.
Okay, great. I think we should look at, I want to hear, why don't we use speed bumps? You say we don't use that. Is there a reason?
Snow removal is one of them. I'm not the one who signed that policy, but I know it's very common. Snow removal is one of them. If you want to be the house that lives next to that speed bump and listen to cars going over that bump all day.
There's nothing temporary for a certain, it would be police enforcement?
Yeah. Yeah, signage and such.
Councilman Pasqua?
Just a little feedback on the speed bumps. There's certain mobile home parks in Coventry that installed them at one point and it dramatically reduced our ability to respond quickly with fire apparatus going through there. And the town has them in Mulhern and Contentment and Ramblewood, right? So it really dramatically slows our approach into those areas. And we know how to navigate that stuff and, you know, not hurt anybody. So I think that that's something we really have to consider. We talk about speed bumps, it's, snow removal is definitely an issue. But a big one is emergency response for sure.
This does sound like something that definitely should be doctored when we do our Safety Services Committee, which we'll be getting up and running the next few weeks. So let's just kind of make a note and tag this. There are alternative traffic calming measures that are used in other places. Solar-powered blinking lights, I mean, striping paint, stuff that may be a semi-permanent that can help perhaps. Even removable bollards, you know, there's things that we can look into. And I think Safety Services Committee would be, would be good to hear this on not only this detour, but Wood Estates in general, maybe get two things done at once here. So appreciate the feedback from everyone. Anything else you want to give us good news on?
No, that's it for today.
Okay.
The good news is the, it's been two years and we've got the funding, we've got the permit, we got the construction company and we are moving forward to get this darn thing done. So that's the good news.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along to the next item. We have Resolution 2025-103 authorizing a change order to the GZA contract to include professional design services for Harris Playground Project. This is in the amount of five thousand two hundred dollars. It looks like our next contestant is Scott Savigny. Let's welcome him from Parks and Recs, Mr. Director.
Happy to be here. Yeah, so the resolution in front of you is a change order to the contract for GZA. Just to refresh your memory, GZA was awarded a contract back in April for design services for Quidnick. Quidnick is playground and basketball renovation that is funded through a CDBG grant. So Harris Playground is a project that is funded through a DEM grant. So while we have GZA on, under contract, looking to add Harris, the reason being, we're close to design construction documents for Quidnick. My thought process in talking with GZA is, well, we also have Harris Playground. What if we try and get both of them bid out at the same time? So what we can do is bid out the Quidnick project. We can, with GZA's designs for Harris, we can then add Harris as a bid alternate to that bid. So we can take a look at Quidnick and see the price on that. Then we can take a look at, the installer would then bid on Harris as well. We can look at that, we can go with the Quidnick bid, the installer we want to. And then we can look at their Harris bid and decide as a bid alternate, do we want to go with it or do we not want to go with it and just decide separately on somewhere else? But in order to kind of put them together and get some construction documents for both, then it'd be helpful for GZA to get out onto site, to be able to look at that site, be able to get all the data that they need to put together some construction documents, which would then go out with the Quidnick bid.
Thank you very much, Mr. Director. Councilwoman Cabaldi?
Is GZA in a contract with the town or still with Angel Law? For this position, for this project? Because G-
Town.
One hundred percent?
For this project, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, thank you for the explanation. So on its face, you know, when I first saw this, I see a roughly thirteen percent change order. And I wondered, you know, if something got missed. So essentially what you're doing is trying to add in this additional work now under this contract to avoid actually additional higher costs doing somewhere else.
Correct. Yes, yes. And that, just, just so you know, that would then, we have GZA under the, under the Quidnick funding, which is CDBG. This would then come under the, we could pay out of the DEM grant. So it's within that project budget as well.
That was my next question. Okay, so you can separate the line items and charge it to the right fund source?
Correct. Yeah, we'd still get a bill from GZA, we would just, we could just settle it internally through there. Yes, absolutely.
Gotcha.
Yep.
All right. Councilmember Hul?
Why the change now?
Because we are close to Quidnick and so I've been kind of working on three playgrounds at the same time. So the other one is on tonight. So in kind of getting them all together, it was my intention to try and get Quidnick and Harris on the same. And since we're getting close to Quidnick, then I proposed that to GZA. And they came back with design services and they said this is what we would need to do to include Harris, get all the construction documents together. So just kind of getting both projects kind of coming to a head at the same time, which would be now.
Do, how much did they charge us for the original of Quidnick?
Thirty-nine-five.
Three thousand nine hundred?
Sorry, thirty-nine thousand five hundred.
And now they want an additional only five thousand to do Quidnick?
To do Harris.
To do Harris, I'm sorry.
Correct.
Why such a drast, obviously the second number is better, but why such a drastic difference?
It's a, it's a smaller site. So Quidnick was a basketball court and a playground. So it's a much larger site, we were adding pathways. This site is just a playground. In their eyes, it's a, it's a little bit easier of a, of a lift, so to speak, in terms of gathering the data that they need from different maps. So that would be, that would be the reason.
And no additional cost to the town, this is all from grant money?
Correct.
And the only other note that I have in here is these prices are only valid for thirty days from nine twenty-six of twenty-five, from what I'm seeing on here.
Okay.
So I see that on a lot of these documents coming through is the expiration dates. So I think moving forward, we as a department need to, when we're getting these types of material in, kind of look at our calendar, our calendar on our side.
Sure.
To make sure that we have those because we-
Well, the, I believe the last council meeting was nine twenty-three. And this is the first council meeting since that one, if I'm correct?
Second.
Is it? Okay.
Right? Oh, yeah, we had a special. That's all I had, sorry.
That's no problem.
That's good. I think we're going to see that item that Councilman Hul just pointed out on another one too. So the point is, yeah, well taken. Anybody else? Questions? Comments?
The second part of my thought process is I think anytime that we hear the acronym GZA, you know, we all start to lose a little bit of faith. So my questions are based on not having any faith in GZA to actually get it done in a timely manner and within a reasonable, you know, amount of money being spent. So I emphasize that I hope that you are understanding that that's, you know, keep, keep this moving forward, keep their budgets in order, they have a lot to prove.
To your point, I spoke to the man on the project through GZA, my contact. We're getting to the point where if we want to get on people's calendars for 2026, I made it. I impressed upon them that we need to start moving now. So they had mentioned that Quidnick construction documents are almost done. These should really only take a couple of weeks at most. So I impressed upon them, we need to get moving on these.
Can we get, can we get dates in place of, you know, that they would submit plans by certain dates in order to like contingency periods? Because they're telling you it's be three weeks, that three weeks turns into six weeks. And then before you know it, it's another seven months and we don't have a playground.
Sure.
But if we're going to agree to give them more money, they should lose a portion of that maybe if they don't abide by their dates. Because we're the ones up here that take the heat on it.
Sure.
So it's like they get to skate away but got their extra 5K and we're up here cleaning it up. So I just want to hold them to a really high standard.
Okay.
Doesn't the money in the grants have a certain time period that you have to spend in it?
They do, yeah.
So there is that guideline because you've got to keep on them.
Right.
Because if-
Their guideline may be a lot longer than ours.
Well, I'm saying we could lose the money if they don't stay to these guidelines.
I won't let that happen.
That's fair, but my, my point to that is their deadline could be 2027 when we're looking to have a playground done in 2026.
No, I've, I've also impressed upon them the deadline that I want to see these things done, which for Quidnick, we want to get that going in the summer. The playgrounds have, you know, they need to go in next summer. So I've impressed upon them, like, these need to happen. So now we're, we're, for me, need to get moving, for them, need to get moving. So I've impressed upon them that-
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion on this resolution?
A motion to approve Resolution 2025-103.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown, second from Councilman Pasqua. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
All right, and thank you for staying on up here. Mr. Savigny, we have letter B, Resolution 2025-104 approving the purchase of playground equipment. This is for the other one under development, this is going to be Giblin Memorial Park. And this is in the amount of forty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars for those of you at home. Giblin is the one that's over in Hunter's Crossing, just to give you an idea.
Yep. So we had the opportunity to apply for a grant through Game Time, depending on your... It was for equipment only. It was not for install, it was not for swings, but it was for play equipment. So the more buy-in you have, then the better the grant you get in terms of dollar-to-dollar match. So as you can see on the, on the invoice that we're, we're saving, we're getting, the equipment that we're getting essentially costs double what we're paying. So we're, we've got a savings of forty-one thousand thanks to the grant. So also, Council President, you were at our, our meeting on the playgrounds and the people in that area wanted a two-to-five-year-old set. I went back to the designer, I wanted to see how we could get it in, what it was going to cost us. He was able to crunch a number of numbers, come up with something just a hair under our budget, which is eighty-nine thousand. So in order to qualify for the grant and get the pricing, we need to basically move forward now with, with the purchase of the equipment. We will take possession, if, if approved, we will take possession of it with install expected in 2026. So we will just take it, we will store it. Basically with the grant, it needs to get out of their factory for, for 2025. To Councilman Hul's point of being a little bit more on top of things, there's a, there was a little delay between myself and the designer. He was away for a week at a, at a conference, taking some time to, once he got back, to redo the design. So I apologize for the deadline that is, is there in order to take advantage of the grant. But in going back and forth and trying to massage this design to get something that the residents wanted, which was a two-to-five-year-old place structure over there, then it took a little time to work that out, but we've kind of worked that out and we've noticed the substantial savings for that. So hoping we can move forward with that.
Is, is the two-to-five-year-old in addition to or in place of what was there before?
In addition to.
Oh, wow.
So everything that was presented.
Great.
Add the two-to-five-year-old place, place structure over there, still got the swings. So I think it's a win-win for everybody in that neighborhood.
Yeah, I just, for those of you who weren't able to make it, got to recognize the department head here for, you know, there was some folks from Hunter's Crossing who just based on the age of the children in the neighborhood, were hoping that they could get something for some of the younger kids as well. So instead of growing into it, you know, it looks like Mr. Savigny was able to make both things happen for the same price, which is very admirable and we appreciate that. That's a very good customer service to our residents, so appreciate the update. Thank you very much. I feel like Councilwoman Cabaldi has something to say.
I have a couple of questions. Can you confirm that the requirement for the full payment at the time of order complies with our purchase and grant policies?
I'm not sure I understand your question. They're, they're on a procurement list, I have no offense.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Also, who's going to install the equipment?
They will.
They will?
They will, yeah. And so this is just for the playground equipment?
Right.
Once we get into 2026, once we get into March or April, then they will be able to install it with their certified installers. So that will be a separate cost.
Where, oh, it's a separate cost to?
Yes.
Install it?
Yes.
On top of the eighty thousand dollars?
No, 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 all, all in. Equipment and install is all within the eighty-nine thousand budgeted through the capital budget in the twenty, I believe twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
So where will the equipment be housed until it's installed?
We have a facility in Western Coventry, the old Nike site, Central Coventry. There's a large building there that we, we will be able to store it up there.
So there's no charge for that, that's ours?
No, no. The only minor inconvenience is we will have to then transport it to the site.
Right, that'll be-
My guys are terrific, they will be able to handle that and, and get that done for the installers when time comes.
And obviously if anything happens during installation?
Hundred percent on them.
Awesome.
That's why we will, in order to maintain any kind of warranties or anything like that, you've got to go with those who know how to do it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Hul?
We, we protected ourselves from the storage time to install time. Like the documentation of when that equipment gets transported to that storage facility. You have something happens there, we're protected until they install?
Oh, if a piece of equipment gets damaged or-
Yeah, yep. Like we're hoping it doesn't happen, obviously, but.
Well, I mean, this, this stuff is made to last, so I can't, I can't imagine anything would happen. These, these are, these are pretty heavy-duty pieces of equipment. Some will either come shrink-wrapped or plastic-wrapped, possibly on a pallet. So they will come with their own protection, but also these are elements that are designed to be out in New England winters and summers. They have a level of durability to them that I, I don't see an issue with that.
And then secondly, you're not going to pay this in its entirety until it's installed. They won't receive all the funds until it's completely installed.
Correct.
Again, I'm going to go back to the dates, it says that this quote was only valid until ten-three of twenty-six. I just want to make sure, a lot of the Game Time documents, all, all kind of have dates that we have to watch on there.
Sure.
So I'm not sure how we would approve it contingent upon the fact that they will still honor that pricing.
I don't believe that they would change the pricing, this was-
I don't either, but it's, it says it in here.
Yeah, I mean, my, mine is-
Thanks to Brittany Boyer for one time bringing that up, I'll never forget this.
Sure. The, the invoice that I included has the date of September 26th on it.
But the bottom of this says offer expires October 24, 2025. The project administrator needs to buy October 17th. Like I'm looking at the Rutterland Coventry town of Give Memorial Recreation, like I'm looking at the bill.
Well, I think we're, we're still in that window.
I'm just bringing it up to you.
I'm confident the, the installer will, will honor the, honor the equipment. If we get outside of the window- If we get outside of the window of 2025 ordering dates, then things change, but we're still within that window now.
And their cost to install will not increase when it comes time to install?
Correct.
And their cost to install is included in this $49,584.83 that's coming from the Game Time Community Grant?
Uh, their.
Cause that's our responsibility, correct?
Their cost to install is, is on the invoice, that is not being paid right now.
But that is in this resolution, that total cost, correct?
The resolution is just for the equipment, which will include, uh, in the, on the invoice, the first four, which are related to this, which are basically the swing structure and the seats. And then the, um, last item, the primetime unit, um, which is listed as 82, but you take away the grant of 41, so, um, all that is included. What is not included is, uh, the three items that are listed as install, install and install.
I thought you said it was included in the overall.
It's not included in the resolution, I should clarify.
In our capital.
Yeah, it is included.
Yeah.
In the price.
I'll come to you later for, for install. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. But right now it's strictly the equipment.
So the total was $88,973.21, 22 cents, which included everything. Half of that is coming from the Game Time Community Grant, correct?
Yes.
And I'm looking at that invoice, that includes insulation and the primetime units.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a follow-up question. Um, this, uh, building that you are storing all this stuff in, is it secure? Is it highly secure?
Uh, we don't have armed guards in front of it, but it is completely locked. And, and it's a, it's a cinder block building, concrete building.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty secure. We haven't had anything stolen out of there, not that we have a ton of valuables up there, but.
All right, anything else? Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion for resolution 2025 104 for the purchase of playground equipment for Giblin Memorial.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025 dash 104, approving the purchase of the playground.
And I will.
For Giblin Memorial Park.
That was really long.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Right, thank you very much Director. Appreciate it. All right, who's up next? We have resolution 25 dash 105 authorizing the purchase of two six to eight cubic yard dump truck bodies for our DPW. We have Director McGee here tonight to speak on this. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The resolution, the resolution you had before this evening is to replay or to purchase two bodies for the, two of our six wheel dump trucks. One bo- one body, we actually had a catastrophic failure, it came off the truck. Luckily it was in Western Coventry, no damage was done to any, any precedents. But we did check, we had what, four trucks that year? After that came back, we checked at the bottom, the frame and the, uh, wells had failed. We checked the other three trucks, luckily we found one that had the same issue that we've already corrected. But we needed to replace that body, the body was racked and so was the, the power. We also received a, uh, Decent Emissions Reduction Act, a DARA grant for a new cabin chassis, which the council approved. We had the cabin chassis, the company for the body was telling us we have, we already got it in writing from them, it would be anywhere from six to eight months to get it. So I would get the body in after the winter season. This company here we talked to, Work Ready out of Johnson, can have it in six to eight weeks. Uh, and it's all well within the budget and the money would be purchased through the, uh, capital lease program and the fair share development fees. And they were ready to go, if I could take the trucks to them tomorrow, they'll start on it.
All right, thank you very much Director. Uh, anybody questions, comments?
Motion to approve resolution 2025 dash 105.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion?
I'd, I'd like to say, um, where I, my, in my short time here, we're spending a lot of money in your department.
We always do.
And one of the things that you just mentioned was that a body came off of a truck, which tells me that our DOT inspections weren't being done to some degree. Maybe you may not see all of this, but what, that could have, you, you, you use the word catastrophic, that really could have been.
Absolutely.
These trucks, it, it is, it falls under your purview to ensure that when they leave that facility, that that stuff doesn't happen. Um, I would just.
These trucks were 2016, they're 10 years old.
I, I don't care if they were yesterday or if they were 30 years old.
But when we took them, we took them, they had inspections and they've passed, they got their inspections on an annual basis.
I'm talking about daily DOT, you check your tires, you make sure your bolts are good, you're checking your, like you're just, the basic things. Um, I've, I've worked at a, you know, DOT inspection station, I know how those one year, one ton inspections go. What I'm saying is it's got to be a, a system process. We, we got lucky there, like let's just not let that happen again, is what, is what I'm saying.
And that's what we're trying to take.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All right, hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you very much Director, next up, resolution 25 dash 106. We're approving, uh, potentially the Sienna condominiums sewer extension. Do we, oh, thank you very much.
Uh, good evening, Joe Levecq, Coventry Town Engineer. Um, seeking approval for an application for a sewer extension and connection. It's the proposed Sienna condominiums, there are a total of eight buildings, two units per building, um, a total of 32 bedrooms. Um, we're looking to extend through the development with an eight inch gravity line, down Kenray Drive with an eight inch gravity line and connecting to the existing 12 inch gravity line in Main Street. Um, I've reviewed the application, um, and I have no issues with, uh, moving forward with an approval.
Thank you very much. Um, might be helpful for some of us, uh, just to, can you give us an idea of, uh, what this process is like? You know, as far as we are going to approve this, uh, sewer, uh, extension, who, uh, who's the cost for that fall on?
The developer.
It is on the developer, okay. So, you know, as we're developing things, we're looking to make sure our infrastructure is able to handle, you know, the new, the new capacities and things like that. So in this case, the, uh, we are granting you some kind of permission to do this? Is this in lieu of what the sewer committee would do or?
Yes. Previously it would go before the sewer subcommittee, they would make a recommendation and then it would go to the town council for approval, based on their recommendation and mine.
So now we've got your recommendation?
Right, now, now it's just from me.
Okay. All right, thank you, that's helpful. Uh, Councilman Brown?
Just a quick, uh, uh, for Joe. I see in the contract, there's nothing about repaving the road when they're done curb to curb. Is Kenray Drive going to get repaired when?
It is, so that's, yeah, that's, that's part of the regulations where they have to go curb to curb with, with any repairs. There will also be, um, curb to curb on Main Street for, for a section where they tie in.
Okay, good, I didn't know that, thank you.
What, where would we find that regulation?
In the sewer regulations.
Right, thank you. I, um, a couple more. Um, I know that as we are only generally, I think it might be 20% of what we're using for our maximum sewer capacity. I'm curious to know, do we have a plan in place with the new development coming into town? And then maybe some failed septics with connecting? Do we have, are we keeping a buffer for the, uh, the structures, the, the real property? That's along that sewer line that may just not be connected now, but may want to be connected in five years, 10 years?
We are, so every.
Awesome.
Per, per the state regulations, the town is required to do a sewer facilities plan. Uh, ours is a couple of years old now.
Okay.
Um, it breaks the town into planning areas. So I believe there's like 32 planning areas. And then it, um, prioritizes each planning area based on a number of criteria. So right now, the, the number one, um, criteria, the, the, the priority area is Briar Point. Um, it's millions of dollars, the, the estimate for the project. The, the report also puts out a schedule of, you know, once the report comes out, if we were to start at that point, where we, we, where we would be with the upgrades throughout the town. We, we haven't done anything, um, based on the recommendations in that report.
And can you tell me how many applicants? Do we deny applicants on a regular basis that are along that? Everyone that applies generally gets it, that's a long.
Yeah, the only, the only issue right now is in the center of New England area. Um, because we have so many developers looking to come online with a limited capacity.
That was like a residential side, like I don't, I don't want to deny a mom and pop.
But there are, there are sections, um, you know, I remember the other night, there was an applicant that was denied. Um, there is a forest main that runs down Neusneck Hill Road down Tyo into West Warwick. That was originally constructed for the Woodland Manor Pump Station. And it wasn't originally designed to be tapped into. And over the years, there were taps that were allowed. And the accumulation of these taps into that line create backflow issues on the pump station. And we have a development now, Coventry Crossings, that are looking to tie into that pump station. So there's a moratorium on adding extensions into that line, um, just to have that capacity when we need it. Um, it's just to preserve the, uh, you know, the pump station is old, it was built in the early seventies. So we're look, we're looking for, uh, to preserve that, the pumps are getting tired. So I'm not looking to add any.
I was looking on a plan.
Well, I think we've got to stay on that particular issue, but you remind me, um, what are we, uh, waiting for to get that sub sewer subcommittee back up and running again, Madam Town Manager?
Um, part, yeah, partially it was due to, um, people leaving the council. And, eh, yeah, we had, we had a little of that. Um, so the sewer subcommittee has sort of two parts to it. One is looking at policy things, which I think is a great idea. I'm three quarters of the way looking at a rewrite of the sewer use ordinance. I put it down when things got busy on other things. What I wouldn't suggest continuing to go to the sewer subcommittee are applications like these. When the sewer subcommittee was put together, you didn't have a professional engineer on your staff. You know, since I've been here, we've been working to take some of the things in that you've been relying on the advice of consultants and paying outside people. You, now you've got somebody who's your employee, looking at your best interests. I can't think of a good reason why if Joe was making a recommendation that someone be allowed to connect, that you would deny it. Yeah, because that shouldn't be political. When it comes to looking at policy in the sewer use ordinance and things like, are we going to raise the fee? Or are we going to allow this and that and the other, that's a good function for the sewer subcommittee.
Okay, so we should just, uh, keep that in the back of our heads. There's something else we need to make in a, an appointment to, at least, uh, from our point of view. But, uh, certainly, that's a good discussion, that's why I didn't want to go too far with it, because I think policy wise, we probably have a lot of work to do there. Uh, certainly appreciate you, uh, for your recommendation, I don't think anyone up here can go against it. It's not costing the town anything. We're going to tap in a little bit to, um, that available space. We're creating infrastructure on one hand with the new development, but we're also increasing our infrastructure in a way too. So, uh, any other questions here? Comments? All right. Uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
For the resolution?
For resolution, where is it? 2025 dash what? 106.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Great, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have resolution 25 dash 107. This is, uh, for the approval of the purchase of a 2024 Ford medium roof transit van. Uh, the amount's going to be 51,005.34 for the Parks and Rec Department. We have Director Savigny up here again. Um, is this van going to be used to transport the equipment from the Nike site? No, just.
Uh, no. Uh, what it will do is allow us to get rid of a 2005 van, which, uh, has outlived its useful life, has a re, running on a rebuilt engine from about eight to 10 years ago. Uh, rebuilt floorboards in the back. Um, so it, it's, it's seen better days. This van will greatly upgrade our fleet. Um, so this was in the, the capital, uh, capital budget for this current, uh, fiscal year. Um, and so we've improved to a medium roof, which is a little bit more headspace. But, um, what's not in here that I can tell you is that the dealer has thrown in, um, shelving and vinyl flooring in the back, which we do not have in our current van, which will allow us to transport things easier, parts, irrigation parts, things like that. So, um, it, it's, we're taking advantage of some, some rebate pricing from Ford, uh, getting it under just again, a hair under our, uh, allotted budgeted amount, uh, but will also greatly improve our fleet.
Gotcha, so this is more for transporting, uh, equipment and other things around?
Correct, it can trailer, so, so i- in a sense, it could take some of that equipment if you throw it on the back of a trailer. So, uh, it just won't, and maybe some of the small pieces will fit in the, in a, in a, uh, in the van.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, but day-to-day operations, it will, it will greatly improve.
Understood, so we have a budgeted, uh, line item request, uh, looks like you came in just under, you said?
Just under, yeah.
All right, we like that. And, uh, any questions, comments from the council, while we have the director up here?
Um, you just, because I'm cautious with spending money. Um, my question was, what did you use it for? You've kind of answered that. Um, we've obviously exhausted the use on the other van, but what is your intentions to, to use that for? The other van, what are you doing?
The other van? Completely get rid of it. Send it out to auction, usually we give old vehicles to DPW and they, they'll have a vehicle auction, so it, it will not be in our fleet.
And moving forward, are you starting to put replacement of vehicles in your budget of your future needs? And so we can work towards that?
Yeah, thi- this, this was part of, our, our fleet is fairly up, uh, upgraded. Um, when I first came on board, we, uh, we purchased a, um, through capital budget, a, what we call a bulk truck, but a long body, um, a long body trunk with a, truck with a, a tailgate, so that's improved. A lot of our other trucks are 2021s, 2020s, so they're relatively new. So I think what we would identify now is, um, is equipment needs in terms of, um, maintenance equipment needs, cutters, you know, see what that equipment, the age on that is and, and start assessing that and working that into the capital budget.
And you are, um, on target, on target, uh, for being within budget, correct?
As a department?
Yeah.
Correct.
I did verify that with Director Savetti. Okay, that was my questions.
All right, so we will not see you up here until 2045 for your next van.
I go big or go home, so.
That's it, all right, last shot. All right, thank you very much. Uh, if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution 2025 107.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman Hul, any further discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Very good, thank you for, uh, all three of those resolutions, by the way.
Yeah, thank you Director, appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda, letter F has been withdrawn, uh, I believe, uh, at the request of. the request of staff. There was some, okay, so, uh, that one is pulled for tonight. Uh, we're going to skip down to letter G. We have Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one oh nine, approving the final release of bond for the Highwood subdivision Phase Five, uh, formerly the Glenwood subdivision. This one's over, uh, of Highwood. Do we have anybody speaking on this at all, or? Mr. McLean?
Good evening, I wasn't planning to speak to it, but I'm, I'm happy to if there's questions. Everything seemed in order. Typically on these matters, uh, the, the town engineer does an inspection. Their inspection showed there were no lingering issues. The recommendation was made to the Planning Commission to release the bond. Uh, the Planning Commission has then duly recommended to the council the release of the bond. Uh, we didn't see any issues on this one.
So my only question was just looking at the age of some of the, the backup material. So I saw a twenty thirteen timeline in there at one point, and that was just, this process has gone back to, to that far, I guess? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and you'll, you'll have to excuse me, I don't have any of the, the details in front of me, but, uh, yeah, some of these projects, I mean, it can take a while, they, they're built in phases.
Yeah.
So, uh, it might make sense that they were, you know, there were phases of this being constructed all of twelve years ago and, uh, they're just wrapping up or, uh, to release it, that means they, they wrapped up the work a few years ago and there's been a monitoring period where we basically observe after the work is done. Are there any issues that are occurring within that, that monitoring period? We've now reached the end of the monitoring period. No issues observed.
That's good news. All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Doug? All right.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, Councilwoman Capaldi.
Say the number again. I'm for Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one oh nine.
Second.
All right, we have a second for Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion? Right, seeing none.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi? Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion pass.
Right, we've got another item here. Thank you very much. Director McLean, come on up again.
Sure, so this item is, uh, Resolution for additional funding for the community septic loan program. I can just basically give you guys an indication. Uh, about a year ago, uh, this council approved the removal of several rules that were being held, uh, that were asking, uh, applicants to have, uh, criteria or, um, meet requirements that were above and beyond, uh, what the state was asking and above and beyond what pretty much the standard municipality was asking. We asked the council a year ago to remove those rules. Um, before that point, this program had been running, uh, for, uh, it looks like about, you know, two thousand and eight, so, you know, seventeen years. We had an average of one applicant a year. Since we removed those restrictions, we've actually had, uh, a, a real interest in this program. I think that what it indicates is the restrictions that were on the program a year ago really were limiting people's accessibility and their interest and how useful the program would be. Um, and I think at this point, the program is, uh, looking to be well-used and we have spent the two, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was authorized a year ago, that's already been spent down in the active applications and we're ready to ask for another round of funding. Uh, this is all funding that's held by the state. Uh, they basically, through this authorization, the state puts an additional pot of money in Coventry's name. Applicants come to the town, they apply to the town for a loan. The town's job is really just to do an initial look at their application and then we send it off to the state, uh, where the state navigates, uh, the actual terms and conditions of the loan and, uh, and then it moves from there. So it's a good program. Um, there haven't been, there hasn't been a history of defaults on the program, uh, so we haven't seen any risk that the town's, uh, experiencing. And so this is really just about making money available for folks that need it for the specific septic improvements.
Thank you very much for that explanation, it's very helpful. Question, Councilman Brown?
Uh, no, um, certainly a great program and I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five one ten.
If I may ask a question, there is, um, a requirement in there for one-year residency. Is that, is that still there? You have to be a resident of the town of Coventry for one year in order to qualify for that program?
You'll have to help me, I actually am not familiar with that one-year residency requirement.
Did it get removed?
That might have been one of the, the issues that was.
The last one I looked at was, it was not, that's why I'm asking. I'd like it removed if it's.
I thought that was one of the things that was removed in the re, redo the year before.
I believe that issue was removed, I don't believe that we have that requirement. Um, I can tell you that we've spent time to make sure we removed all of the local requirements that were above and beyond the state. Um, I don't think that that requirement exists today. If for whatever reason it does, it might be because the, the state has some parameter, but I, I think that was one of the ones that was, that was removed a year.
So somebody who buys a house in Coventry tomorrow can apply to access these funds the following day to replace a failed cesspool?
I believe that is correct.
You'd be able to.
Yeah? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman, we have a motion from Councilman Brown, we are looking for a second, I believe, we have a second from Councilman Hul. Any further discussion? Right, thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Right, thank you very much, on to item number nine. Uh, this is new, uh, council business matters that were carried over from last time, we had, uh, a couple of items for discussion. Uh, the first, under letter A, we have discussion and action on council leadership appointment, uh, or election for a vice presidency. And I guess I will, oh, good, okay. I will ask for, uh, if there's any nominations for vice president. Councilman Pasqua?
I nominate Councilman Brown for vice president.
I second that.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? All right. Hearing none?
Discussion right now?
Uh, yeah.
So I, I originally was going to put myself, uh, up for this after, um, my initial support was for, um, Councilman Brown for, for this position. And some of the reason why I wanted to nominate, throw my, my name in the hat was just because I could see that the previous vice president and the previous president were getting communications that the rest of the council people weren't receiving. With the next agenda item coming up and the correction on the council rules, we're literally all equal. Um, it's a figurehead and I, I think Frank would be great up here. He knows the town, the town knows him. He's a little more level-headed, he's a little more soft-spoken than I am. Um, I, I'm more than happy to, to second that.
Thank you very much, Councilman. That's nice, that's nice. All right, any further discussion?
Mr. Vice President?
I, I, I have, I have something.
Come on, really?
Yay! I'm so excited. Oh, I think we have to vote now.
Yes. Yes, we do.
Councilmember Brown?
Abstain.
Oh!
Councilmember Pasqua?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Four in the affirmative and one abstention, motion passes.
Uh, if I could, um, certainly it'll be an honor and a privilege to, uh, serve in that capacity. We're all the same on this council, um, and that's the biggest thing we got going here. There's a lot of transparency. We're going to move Coventry forward to be stronger and more vibrant and that's our goal, is to make that happen. So, uh, thank you for the support, I appreciate it and, uh, look forward to sitting in that seat. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I hope you're ready to take over because it's, it's been a long night, I use a bathroom, but, um, I think we're gonna, we have an interesting discussion ahead of us now. Um, we've got some options on this one. Um, the point of, uh, the next item B, uh, we were going to look to, uh, make some amendments to council rules, we had this on the last agenda. You know, the big point of this was going to be to make sure that, uh, our council rules reflected some of the things that were just brought up. Uh, you know, equality as far as agenda items and other issues go. What ended up happening, we've got a series of amendments, uh, Councilman Hul suggested, we have some other notes and things, uh, Councilwoman Capaldi suggested. What we don't have is all these on one document. If we want, we can go ahead and, and review that, if, if people have already reviewed them and basically said, you know what, I'm okay with all the changes, we can vote them through, uh, almost essentially as a block. And if need be, remove, uh, one or two items and vote them separately if we want to have a further discussion. Or, um, we could, uh, get this all combined into one document to be edited and approved again. Councilwoman Capaldi?
Yeah, um, our last meeting, um, there were issues with the PDF being locked, so I was able to get the content into a Word doc. Um, and it was told to us, I think, that the town manager was going to put everything into one document. For me, as a communication person, it seems a lot easier, I'm sure for everyone, not just someone in communications, to be able to read everything in one document. Um, so I voted for one document, but, you know, if you guys don't want it in one document to see what works and what doesn't work, whatever, but that's my, I would like to see. And then we could edit it then. This is not, uh, these are just our suggestions. It should be into one document, then we can edit that document into one final.
So that's kind of one, one avenue would be, you know, get this into one, um, you know, either highlighted red line document with your proposed changes, your proposed changes, any other changes, and then have that before us, knowing maybe eighty-five percent of it's fine and we can edit a couple things on the fly and vote. Councilman Hul, did you have some?
Yeah, I, I, look, I, I'm up here because of council rules. Um, so for my, my need and my want to solidify the council rules, truthfully, I feel like it should have been before the council, uh, vice president's role, right? I think we've all learned to trust each other up here to some degree and I'm fine with that, but I don't want this to be like, okay, now we need another two, two weeks to put it on a, an agenda for one document and then two more weeks for everyone to review it. Like, these council rules is what created, we're still technically operating under the old ones. And, and, and at that point, that gives you, Mr. Council President, the full power to control the agenda. And although I see that that is not happening, I want to solidify that. And now we're months in again and it's like, gosh, can we just get someone to put these changes on a document so we can all review it and agree to move forward with it? Like, everything else is moving in, in, but, but it should have been done. Like, I don't want this to be another, another six months. Because I'm doing good faith by casting the nomination and withdrawing myself to ensure that we're seeing things. I just want to make sure that that is like the number one, I know Dan is probably watching from wherever he is, but, um, Dan, uh, uh, Madam Assistant Manager, please ensure that we have that handled. It's really important to the people I represent, to myself, to ensure that we're all equal up here and until we have that document done, we're not all equal.
Can we make sure that Maria, you're taking that away? I don't know if you're going to do it, but Dan was supposed to do it, so if you could do it or someone on that side.
I'm going to say we, we'd be happy to.
Yay, thank you.
Does this require a, a formal adoptive codifying process or?
It does, it does require the council to amend.
Okay.
But at this point, you're just tabling what you, you have in front of you.
Yeah, we'd have to. Okay. You, you guys good with that on the end? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, uh, entertain a motion to table?
Backdoor.
Yeah.
Twenty eighth? Yeah.
Yeah.
Next meeting?
The next meeting.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion to table, um, until the twenty-eighth for the formal adoption of proposed amendments to the council rules.
I'll second it.
I have a second by Councilwoman Capaldi?
And at the twenty-eighth meeting is going to be voted on and discussed, or is it going to be presented?
I would say for voting and, uh, for discussion and voting, but at that point at least, it won't be something where we'd have to.
On the record, sir.
Go through each room.
It's open for.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's not an ordinance, so it doesn't require introduction, hearing, and then.
Well, our agenda has places that votes may or may not be taken. What I'm looking for is to ensure that votes are taken.
Yep.
Thank you.
We should, in the next two weeks, we all personally got to review it, get your questions ready, next meeting, we vote on it.
And if we don't have amendments, we should probably just say that too, so that way people aren't waiting and there's no more, uh, confusion or dithering.
And you're going to get it in the same format that you would in ordinance change? So if it's struck out, it's coming off, it's underlined, it's being added on, I'll explain when you get it. Just same as you would in ordinance change.
Gotcha. All right, so we have a motion and a second to table, any more discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you all very much. Uh, last item under this, uh, number nine, we have discussion slash action of audit of the invoices between the town of Coventry and Angel Law. Update from myself, um, just, uh, have been doing some diligence on, uh, our side of the House, uh, speaking with our State Director of Revenue, our State Auditor General. Uh, general consensus is essentially, you know, we've got to look at, uh, what we have and start to, you know, examine whether or not we have something essentially to bring forward to, uh, either for criminality purposes or, uh, recovery purposes. So that's just kind of an update of something I did on my own. Our next few decisions here are going to revolve around, um, you know, looking at what the potential is for recovery, looking at the ways we may approach something like that and dealing with the fact that there may not be, uh, an avenue for, you know, a big recovery and it will, uh, most likely cost us. Uh, so that's kind of the update on that, Councilwoman Capaldi.
So as we proceed, um, in everything that we're doing currently from when Angel Law was, you know, we stopped, we got rid of them, um, things have been popping up that we're all questioning, like, oh, okay, so is there a place that we can be putting all this information? Granted, I just found out that we can't use shared documents, but we should maybe bring them, uh, email them to Joanne, Joanne could put things down, then we could start collecting these things and things that we do, because I, I had two today that I question, was this done the right way? What did he charge us for? And, um, you know, we got to look into this, so what do you suggest?
So I think that's going to depend on the avenue we take, you know, so, uh, obviously we should discuss with, uh, in-house legal, but, you know, for instance, let's say we went auditing route, I think that's something you would obviously tell, you know, the auditors if there was a more criminal aspect, maybe that's a different avenue, I just don't know. But I think in general, that's how that would proceed, but certainly, uh, I know we also have, uh, auditors we use for our regular audits. If that's something we want to proceed with, I would assume that that would be something where maybe we get with them and report these.
Are you telling us then individually, just to keep our own notes until that time? Or do we want?
No, I'm just, uh, throwing out there what, what I'm thinking of, we're kind of putting this plane together as it's flying on this one, so.
I would love to have, um, Joanne hold everything since we're not supposed to be, we can't use shared documents and, you know, we're not supposed to be talking together, it's OMA, so the mood makes, or, or Assistant, um, or Dan, anybody. We give you a lot of stuff to do tonight, man.
Did you have something, Councilman?
Yeah, if I may.
Go ahead.
So again, I'm going to go back to the same fact that we are here now with this on our agenda for the second time and still nothing being done about it. I did believe that Mr. Sivetti and Dan, according to my email, were going to get us options on whether or not our internal auditor could do it. I have yet to see anything, we've had no discussions on whether this is going to call
We've had no discussions on whether this is going to cost us $200,000 if we can do it for $5,000. At some point, we have to, we have to just make a decision. We're either going to move forward with, with an audit or not. I think there's not anybody sitting up here that feels confident that something, whether it be transparent or not, whether it be an overcharge, I don't know. But at some point, we can't just keep saying like, okay, we'll wait for Mr. Sovedi to get us options, and then here we are, six months later, and we're still talking about an audit. Like, at that point, we could be half into it and figuring out a resolution of what we could do. I just, I thought finance would have had something for us, options, like this is what they do.
Can we, I haven't seen Mr. Sovedi in weeks. I don't even, I haven't seen him, he hasn't been at any of the meetings. Can we please get this recorded right now that we need something with, by the, is he around? Is he on vacation?
He's around, he had a conflict tonight. What I would recommend.
It has been a long time. I mean, we should get this by end of week, if you've been waiting for this for several weeks.
What I would recommend is, you know, say what it is you want them to come back. Do you want them to come back with the different options? Do you want them to come back?
We already did that.
We already did that, that hasn't been answered.
I wasn't here, so I'm sorry. You know, whether you, you know, are authorizing how much money, I know when you had a last big transition, there was quite a bit of money spent for somebody to ask questions of staff and nothing resulted of it. And I don't know that any of you were even on the council at the time. So do you want to spend money? Is it, is it the fact that?
Presentation from the Finance Director on options, both detailing the extent of the audit. I would like to see maybe options for a high level review versus a full forensic, and then we can discuss the differences among those options and the price points for them.
I have a question, President Verducci. Have we seen the unredacted invoices yet?
We have retrieved them, but I don't, nobody here is, you know, they haven't been distributed to anybody yet. So I will leave that with solicitor as far as how that should go. I don't, nobody's kind of gotten them and dug into them yet, but we just know we have them.
Well, we have them. When can we get them? In the next executive session so we can all view them together?
I think the council can, can request the Finance Director to bring those, that financial information to you at any time. But I would suggest you do it in the executive session.
Can we get that for, that's another thing to tell Mr. Sovedi.
Make a note for next exec session, please. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm hoping that by the next meeting, we can like, again, have some sort of a plan here, because, you know, we came into a meeting, the last meeting, we didn't even talk about the fact that there was an audit discussion on the agenda. We just kind of skipped it and didn't inform the public on anything. And now the public is, could be tuning in again tonight to see what we're going to do on an audit of you, Mr. Angel's invoices. And you know, my position's clear, like, I, we need to audit him. There isn't a bone in my body that feels like that man didn't get something out of someone here. It's just, at what point are we going to, we can't move forward until we have this information.
You know, just because we don't get to talk behind, you know, in our daily life, so I'm going to say it here. We all feel the same way you do, Richard. I'm sorry, Councilman Hool. But we don't know what goes on back there. So we can push Dan stronger to get this stuff done, because it shouldn't take six weeks to get these answers. We're in a meeting, this is when we can be together, we come up with a, some, an initiative that we need, by next meeting, it better be there. That's enough time, right?
No, I, I agree.
Because what I feel like happens is this is how they allow, this is how the old council was able to get things pushed by, because they just keep doing this. They put it on an agenda and then they don't talk about it and it gets moved down, and then people forget about it, and then they add it on if someone makes a complaint about it. And it's like, oh yeah, we don't have it, we'll just get the information from Mr. Sovedi. No, Mr. Sovedi should have been here this evening, this is on the agenda. Like, we're discussing an audit and our finance guy isn't on the agenda. Like, I just, why is it even here?
Well, now we have new president and a new vice president that should be managing.
And again, I understand that the processes of how things were done when we had a previous council to how they are now, the department heads are adjusting. I understand that, the communication is getting better. We all see it up here. But that isn't an excuse to like, just not have us prepared, otherwise just take it off the agenda. It's like it didn't exist.
Well, I understand what you're saying, and that was the alternative, but if you take it off the agenda, then it's like we skipped it altogether, so.
What we kind of are anyway.
This was my way of giving an update on who I talked to and just kind of what we did checking in, but like I said, these things are all in motion in a certain way, but I, to your point, these do need to be escalated and nothing should be docketed if we need a staff presentation and they're not here to give it. So next meeting, I think you took the notes already, but I think so far we have two items. One, some kind of presentation from the Finance Director detailing options, price points, et cetera, on the audit, procurement methodology, things like that. And then the second item was an executive session update to get unredacted invoices presented to council. Anything else we want for next docket?
Mr. Chairman, I might suggest that you do them in the other order, that you have the executive session and look at the unredacted bills, and that might help inform your decision, knowing that they've all been paid already. That might help inform your decision about what you want to do going forward.
Yeah, I'm, certainly.
Like, look, be sure you look at them first.
It's a good idea.
And then help.
That wouldn't matter for me, because I don't, I've only been here since August and those invoices, we don't have anything to balance them, like, the balance.
Yeah, I mean, they're all, they're already been paid, so is your goal of the audit to get the money back, to, to charge someone with something, something, something?
Well, I think the goal of the audit is sure someone else is telling us, not us, that something is either right or it's wrong, right? It very well could be that Coventry just entered into a really bad contract. You know, it's, it's a legal, really bad contract. That could, that could be the outcome. But I don't want to be the one to say that. Like, our auditors need to look at this and say, hey, like, this isn't the industry norm. It may not be illegal, but it sure as hell was not going to, you know, ethical. And from there, at least we can learn, you know, we just weren't talking about it, you know, like, we can learn moving forward, what not to do again. Thank you.
This is going to take a little bit longer than a half hour executive session to go through eight months of invoices? So how are we going to fix that? I don't think, we can't meet for an executive session at four o'clock and be in here for two hours and then come to a council meeting.
I don't think the past invoices have any, they're not going to change anything, right? Like, those invoices have been billed, they've been paid, they've been, them checks are cash cleared, spent.
But you're going to see if it, there was something wrong, or was it just unethical?
I don't have anything, I don't have anything to balance it off of, is all I'm saying.
We do. That's why I said today I found two.
We all just got the same invoices, so none of us have anything to balance that off of. Like, last month, we all just got six months of invoices, seven months.
Yeah, but I got two things that were on his plate for over a year that Mr. Igliosi had for two weeks and fixed it. So if we were charging him for over a year on these issues that didn't get rectified, then what is that?
It's just going to be hard to prove, is all I'm saying.
Of course it's going to be hard to prove.
Well, I mean, I'd, I'd be willing to entertain a, a special meeting just on that topic if, if we can find the time and scheduling, so I'm totally open to whatever it takes on that.
We need a special workshop. We can sit in from.
Why don't we do a workshop?
Some sort of, we all can get read in, we can get up to date what our goals are, what, you know, we have to tackle, you know, probably going out of line here, RDA, and like, we got to figure out all these stuff, and none of us can talk. So the only time we can, we either have an 11 hour meeting.
Maria, you talked about doing a workshop where we can set our priorities with all these big things that we have to get a download from our new solicitors to see which way we're going. We've got major stuff going on that none of us know what's going on, because we're in like this like black hole right now, and you, your suggestion was excellent.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's a good idea, because you have a chance to reset, figure out, you know, what your common ground is, what things you want to see as a council, hear from the department directors about, you know, the trucks falling apart, or, you know, the generators made in World War II, and, you know, go for a tour. Do those things before you start to look at the budget. So you, you know, there's, there's some things that we have to do, but there's some things that, you know, you might not have as many questions, not pointing you out, you might not have as many questions if you had more background, like, look at the stuff and get, you know, what we're working with. Work sessions are not intended to be things that you necessarily vote on.
Right.
You know, but there are a chance to be able to have a conversation about a long thing, you know, that.
Is the public involved? Is the public listening?
I've always done them where the public's open. They're listening, but they're not participating.
I think that's a great idea, so everyone knows what's going on.
Why would you not have the public be involved in what you're.
Can we add that to the list for scheduling?
Let's get that, let's get that on the books.
We can do that. I said we.
We meaning what?
Joanne's taking a note. Right, Joanne's taking a note on that.
I think it's imperative.
And I'm teasing you, Councilmember Hool.
I'm sorry?
I'm teasing you about all your questions, but I think if, if you saw some of the things and actually went in some of the facilities that it might help to understand.
You can never over communicate. Like, we don't get enough information.
We don't do, I don't think we do enough outreach.
No, we don't, I can tell you we don't.
That's, that's just my background.
I have a consideration, and I hope it's all inclusive in this, so I'm hopefully not going off too much, but should we wait until the two new appointments are here to do this, so everyone's involved? This workshop? No, the workshop, so everyone is, gets up to speed in everything that we need to do to move forward. So I say let's book this, so I think we said if the 20th, everyone has to have their resumes in, that following meeting, what, I don't have the date in front of me, would be a good time to set.
Yeah, I mean, we can just plan on using the off-council meeting weeks to do some version of workshop or special session, depending on what's needed. I mean, we're just going to have to hit it and work at it. So, you know, as long as we basically each can put aside a night, a week for the next and.
Can we do it on a weekend to have a little bit more?
No, these, on a weekend? I, I would discourage the work session on a weekend. However, for those that want a tour week, you know, to look at some of the facilities, if you wanted to do it all together, it would probably end up being a weekend, but we can also do onesie twosies, you know?
You brought up a point where, you know, one of the things that I, when I got on here, this system isn't designed, and stop me if I'm wrong, this system isn't designed to succeed. Where, where, we meet with the clerk, we're given a, a manila envelope with a couple of passwords for Wi-Fi and our email, we hand it a tablet, and we're like, congratulations. There should be an orientation process. Like, we want everyone up here to win to some, you, what, what happened to that? Like, sit with legal, get read in, get.
So we had that. You, you didn't have it because of how you came in, but there is a, there's a few different things. The state puts on a class that you go to, and you sit through and talk, teaches you all about this stuff, and then you sit with legal and they go over meanings laws and making sure you stay on topic and, you know, not.
And what happened to me?
You got forgot about.
I didn't get it either when I was appointed. I got it after I was in an actual election. You were a special election, so you're going to have to wait.
Yeah, it's generally done by the state after a.
I'm talking about like on a local level, sit with our solicitor and, you know, and meet our department heads. We're making decisions about parks and wrecks, and you know, like, I've never had a real conversation with parks and wrecks. You know, it's like, it's just wild to me that we make decisions for these people and based on scenarios. Yeah, we are.
Yeah, so we're going to move to public comment for undocketed items, so anybody in-house that would like to come up? Just make sure the green button's on, push the button. Thank you.
Hi Cathy.
Hi. I was asked, my name is Cathy Phillips, live at 9 Milton Lane. I represent the Westwood Action Group for Hometown America Park. I was asked to come here by Councilwoman Capaldi. We understand that they, the park owners have withdrawn their plans.
Yay.
But I don't give up. They've withdrawn their plans to move forward with a relocation reconfiguration at this time. Doesn't mean they can't reapply, okay? However, they could, they have put in what looks to be currently improper infrastructure. And why I'm saying that is the properties on the new Cheryl Lane properties, plus one at the Endersander Circle, and the one on Torch Lane, this gentleman right here, 13 years his yacht has been flooding, and I'm talking about six inches of water every time it rains. Cheryl Lane, they had to leave because they have a bedtime.
Can I ask our solicitor a question? You know what's going on with this subject matter, correct? And I know what she's going to talk about tonight, and I definitely want you to continue on, but what she's going to talk about, does she, does this group or these residents have to get their own representation with a lawyer? Or, I mean, what does the council have to, I don't understand, we don't have any say with the owners of Westwood Estates.
Well, I, I want to, I don't mean to cut you short. I kind of have several things I want to say. Right now, I'm going to be working with Senator Reptakis and Representative Nadon to develop legislature to protect homeowners from these slumlords, sorry. And, but in the interim, I got to be careful how I say this, things are being put in place and done that are not the existing laws that we have. They're not according to the law. These are homes, there's one gentleman that was here, his name is Vinnie, his home was put in, and his kitchen floor goes into a V because of the foundation. How does this happen? What are the protections we have? Now, I don't know if it's DEM, I don't care what it is, I don't mean to sound sarcastic, but these people, you know, it's like going through a trench of, you know, who do you go for this, who do you go for that? Meanwhile, the gentleman spent $325,000 on his home, okay? Brought these concerns to the current owners, you know, the community manager, sorry, there's nothing we can do about that. Then you get the theory that DM is saying, well, your definition, excuse me, of swampland is different maybe than our definition of swampland. Seriously? I'm sorry, I get emotional. I'm not done yet. There are several class action suits against this company. Hometown Oak Point, right in Massachusetts, they did the same thing there. Now, I was told we can't do anything about that because that class action didn't happen here. Well, it is happening here. And these, they're putting in these homes, and okay, it's off the docket right now for the 35 homes, 11 floaters are off altogether, but what does that mean? Does that mean the future homes, they're not even taking care of the homes that they have there now? I feel that they don't have the same protection as regular homeowners. This just isn't right. It's still the same green money. It's still the same green money. And then, it seems like the rules for a replacement home is different than a, a new home. And they're putting replacements in where there wasn't even any homes there. I just, I really feel that there has to be laws, I think the town council, maybe, I'm a greenhorn here, can look into what the town is inspecting, non-inspecting. To, for me, Department of Business Regulation, right? Really simple. Department of Business Regulation. They're supposed to regulate how businesses operate in Rhode Island, right? No? That's not happening. That's just not happening. And these people are suffering, and it's not just one family. There was, they, they had to leave, two of them were sick and one had to go home. They have flooding in the yards. I have pictures. Can I show them to you, or no?
Yeah, I think we can submit them, get them voted on to make sure they're part of the official record. We'll take a motion right now to have those items submitted into the record.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
But it says here in the-
One sec, we just have to do a vote. We'll make sure we get these in. No, no. I knew it was two.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hool?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you. Please continue.
In Rhode Island state law, the general laws, in chapter 31-44-7, it says, "To maintain the present, the owners of the park are supposed to maintain the premises when necessary to prevent the accumulation of stagnant water." That's stagnant water. Since the inception of the park, they have not put any, at all, any controls for dealing with water since the 70s. This is against town ordinance, it's, it's against everything, and, and now you're saying private, private property? Is that how they get away with it? Do you know what I'm saying? It's, you know, I really appreciate your time.
I know that Senator Reptakis and Nardone and I, we met with you several times. Unfortunately, I don't have anything to deal with the state, and I know that I will be in close contact with them. They're the guys that will be able to help this. Am I speaking correctly? Because we don't have any jurisdiction on that. I don't know if Doug can talk to about who, not zoning, but when people, contractors come in and build and stuff?
Engineers.
Engineers, yeah.
They're not keeping a close enough-
So who, does the town get involved with that, to have engineers come and look at what's going on? Or do we have to wait for our senator and our town rep to, to take an action on something? Or can we do something here within the town?
Sure.
Okay.
Look here, so you don't have to-
Thank you.
For, for any new development project, which, without anything being on the agenda, I don't want to be too specific, we do have a process where they have to show us the design on how they're mitigating the impacts of what they're developing. This particular property has unique zoning on it, there have been generations of previous staff that have not sought for the process that I'm seeking new developments go through when we do this, and so my only thing I can tell you is that they have achieved building permits in the past, which is basically the final step of any development. They hadn't achieved the sort of level of design review that we're used to, that typically goes through a planning commission. So, long story short is, for new projects moving forward, my anticipation is, any new project here is going to have to account for stormwater mitigation for the projects that are being currently conceived of, and they're gonna have to address where there's significant issues across the site. But that's, the, the limit of that is that that has to happen within a project that we're reviewing. It's, I don't think the town has a role to reach back and exact a different level of review or a different level of design consideration for anything that already has achieved a building permit, unfortunately.
So that would be getting personal representation?
I think it is civil, and until this particular, until any particular property has an application in which we can then bring the development up to a certain standard of code, which the, there is powers to ensure that new development is brought to that standard, until there's a project that we can utilize for that type of review and that type of inspection process, I think what's on the ground in the, in the private property of the park and the relationship between the private homeowners and the landowner does seem to be civil to me, but it, it may be that it depends on the details of their lease agreements and the, the maintenance agreements that, that those might include, so.
Councilman-
I've had multiple conversations with Ms. Phillips. She's certainly expressed good information to me on what's going on. Some of the issues are not germane to what planning can do with any future application, but we certainly take everything into account to ensure whatever could happen moving, moving forward is, is done better and done according to code and done with inspections.
One of the things that we could do is, I know that one of your concerns is that they removed it from the agenda now, but they could revisit it. I've, I've sold property on Torch Lane. I, you have to walk through, you ankle-deep high water. That park has, it's been known to be a little difficult at times. I'm wondering if, to ensure that they're, they don't receive, could we loop in any new future requests with mitigating some of this flood issue? Kind of like a, you know, a negotiation, basically. You want some, you, it would stop your concern about them ever coming back and saying, "Hey, we wanna do the trailers now," but they haven't addressed all that, those issues. Are we able to tie that into any future requests?
Uh, yeah, and without being too specific, because what we're really discussing is, is, you know, properties that aren't on agendas, it's part of public comment, but I can tell you, the answer to where you're headed conceptually is yes.
Thank you.
Let's talk about when there's a project in front of us, what issues around the site need to be mitigated, in addition to what new growth needs to make sure that they're already mitigating that as they develop and they're showing us in designs. So, all projects, regardless of any individual property, any individual project, all projects, we would hold to that same line. So that's a, that's a general conceptual statement I think I want to leave you with.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
All right. I just want to state something, the obvious, we're not an affluent community. Engaging an attorney, that takes money. Did you have any funds in the town that we could use for that?
You barely get to give it a shot. Um, will you do me a favor? Because I know you communicate with me a lot. Keep me, keep me abreast of everything that's going on with Reptakis and Nardone. I will, they fill me in on everything too, and let, you know, let's let them start up here and see what we, they can do to set any kind of laws, because those are the guys that can do it.
But I also think, I don't want to be insulting to anybody here, I really don't, but I also think that when they do these things, I work for builders, sprinkler fitters, I borrow the owner's bottom line so he can cover his payroll. You know a little bit about this. I think that they really have to keep a closer eye on how they're doing these things. I mean, they're getting permits to do these things, and-
According to him, he's not gonna, that's not gonna happen.
I know.
Anymore.
Thank you so much.
It doesn't happen to new things.
But what happens to this guy with the V is, I'm sorry, it's just, I could really, I'm not going to, but I could really cry. It's just, it's really, you take $300,000, and if you can imagine, and it just goes boom, and-
Cathy, Cathy, go to the media, make a lot of noise, like you can do, and see if you can get help that way.
Okay.
Homeowners' associations are powerful, and you're more powerful in numbers than you-
We don't, we don't have an incorporated homeowners' association.
Just if you get, you, you don't need to have it incorporated to make change, if you get enough people on board. But that park is hard, you're, you're, that's, you-
I'm sorry I even bought in there, I'm telling you, I really am. But anyways, I really appreciate your time. I know you've heard me a lot.
Thank you, Cathy.
Thank you, and thank you so much, Doug. And thank you, Solicitor.
Come on up, sir. State your name and address for the record.
Jonathan Longo, 21 Torch Lane. I'm like the main torch pond. These are self, safety and health issues, because when you've got standing water, and even when they do pretend they're fixing it, basically all they do is dig a big hole, line it with some rocks, and call that a catch basin. However, in the summer, that fills up and turns green with mosquitoes. Okay, I have a hybrid electric car, which means you can plug it in also, and I have to stand in three, four inches of water to plug the car in. That's probably not safe. So these are, these are safety issues also, they're not just us whining because our yard's flooded. My yard gets six to 12 inches in the back, and which means every time it rains, I've got a big pond across the back of my yard, which then I get eaten by mosquitoes, because if there's one within a mile, I get it. But the problem is, is that now I have to spend $100 a month, and I have for 14 years, to try to kill off the mosquitoes. And the guy has to come out every three weeks, so that's 100 bucks every three weeks to kill mosquitoes. That shouldn't be my responsibility. Now, I've been there for 14 years, and every couple of years, I try to clear it with the office to get a drain at the end of my driveway, because it comes in one corner, fills my driveway about six inches, and then fills my field up, and then fills up my backyard, and dissipates and goes out the other side. And they tell me, "We don't do that." Well, to show you how hard it is to deal with this park, is that when the park manager lived on Valiant, she was staying with her boyfriend or something, but they redid that street, put in seven drains, and made it four feet wider on each side. So how can you tell me, "We don't do that," when you put in seven? I mean, it just, that doesn't make any sense. And if you try to discuss any, with, anything like that with them, you get screaming, hollering, yelling, and I've actually told her, I probably shouldn't tell you this, but I've told her she should get a doctor and get on some meds, because it's just out of control. We, we have no say there whatsoever. The homeowners' association has good intentions, but cannot cross her.
Look, she, she made my client pave a driveway for a house they don't own.
They told me to do that, too.
My, my question would be, maybe DEM should be of some help. I know that most of your septic systems are in the front, you know, and if that's all flooded, and now we have the overflow, the septic is not properly leaching.
Well, see, what they say is that those septic tanks are hooked up to a pump to go to an alternative area, which is illegal by state law. You can't store, you know, septic from various units into a big holding tank, and if the sewer system doesn't come down here, where does it go?
And that's mine?
Yeah, where, they just built, see, what the problem is with the main flooding is, they don't compact the soil properly when they fill in the marshland, because they call it wetlands, but that boundary moves every time they want to build something. And, which is apparent by what they're doing on Tagga Avenue, they filled in the wetlands and got the okay by DEM to go ahead and fill in the wetlands.
Soil testing.
Yeah, they, they don't do soil compaction testing. It's a non-survey state, so there's no, no record of what's going in. Mike Beard took over, he's got a safety issue that he's causing by all the old travel trailers and junk cars he's put down there. These travel trailers have 20-pound propane cylinders on the front, report it, nothing happens. He's actually building buildings now on Westwood Estates property and made the soil unstable because he just dug away the hill, and there's a 20-to-40-foot drop. I mean, we need some kind of enforcement here, because this is health and safety issues, and we don't seem to be getting anywhere, no matter who we call. You know, we obviously can't afford to hire a lawyer at 400 bucks an hour, so we need some help from the town somehow. Town attorney, somebody like that maybe, or pass a bond, you gave her a bunch of money Thank you, gentlemen, and lady.
Thank you.
That's a tough, that's a tough one, because it's private property, and that's, that's the hard part there.
Guys in the Health Department of Coventry doing anything.
That's how they get away with it, though. They say this is private property, or they say the class action, well, that's not happening here. See what I mean? It's kind of like, not proactive, it's very reactive, and people can't live their lives that way.
What if you call the attorneys that are holding, that gathered up the class action? Talk to them, see what they can offer you, or see, I mean, they're starting somewhere.
I, they'll, as you well know, the learning curve has been really big for me. That's the next step that we're gonna be doing.
Yeah, do that.
Because I've been doing, you know, going through laws.
Don't do that. Go to a source, and that person will be a source for you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Cathy. Thank you.
Anyone else on public comment in the room? Come on up.
Cheryl Kane, 185 Reed Schoolhouse Road. I know you see me here every couple of weeks, but the reason why, what I want to bring to your attention is, this customary home occupation that we've been talking about for the past three years, it is not just about Reed Schoolhouse Road. This is throughout Coventry, where we have all these illegal customary home occupations, and like everyone in Coventry, we all expect to have a certain quality of life and safety. So when you allow these kind of businesses that bring this kind of nuisance to these areas, then it's really not fair to these taxpayers as it is to everyone else. When this customary home occupation was first created, it was created for that one reason, for those reasons, for the neighbors to be able to enjoy their property like everyone else. I did, what I did the other day is I put together a letter, so this way, all the neighbors that have been complaining for the past three years from Jessica Lee Court, also Reed Schoolhouse Road, instead of all having separate letters, and then they've been calling all the different departments all three years, I put something together, and then I went over to them and to talk to them. But unfortunately, what happens is what's happening throughout Coventry, and all the people that I've spoke to, that have these illegal customary home occupations, as in lawn, property maintenance kind of businesses, and I wrote down all the different things that what this business would do, and I asked if they would sign it, and they basically said, "I'm sorry, I know that we've been complaining all this time, but we are intimidated. We are intimidated to let this guy know our names, our addresses, and our faces." So I, at this point, they are talking about it, and they might be signing this document, but like I said before, this is what, how Coventry has been running this. With this customary home occupation, all these years that these people have complained about this, they were told they had to write a formal complaint. They're not gonna write a formal complaint, for the reason is, because they are intimidated, and they fear, they fear retaliation. So I truly believe that we need to address the guidance for this customary home occupation and make sure that the people that have had businesses for the past 50 years, they're gonna be grandfathered in. Matter of fact, the people that did, that have had these kind of businesses for all these years, you wouldn't even know it, because they respect their neighbors, they take care of, of their property, they don't make any noises, there's no toxic smoke, there's no excessive noise. So that's why the businesses that are in place right now are still there, because they respect their neighbors, they don't have people complaining about them because they don't make all the noise. So they are actually legal customary home occupations. The ones that I am speaking about are the ones that cause the smoke, the noise, you know, all that kind of stuff that should not be in a residential area. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Brittany Boyer, 318 Town Farm Road. In light of all the craziness lately, I really haven't had a chance to talk about the recent public meeting put on by the RDA and GZA. I think it's important that we do. I know I did see a couple of you there. It was interesting. To be honest, I don't- To be honest, I don't think that they have done enough as an agency to warrant what we're spending. The last public meeting regarding the pond was embarrassing. It, it really was. Sitting through that was, it was a joke. The gentleman Kevin who ran the meeting, ran that meeting as if it was for pond property owners only. And to his defense, I don't know if he knew that it wasn't. I was a little embarrassed for him with the way he ran it. He started every conversation in every breakout room with all of the people he had. And the first thing he said to everybody was, raise your hand if you own property on the pond. And I'm still not sure why that even mattered because it was supposed to be a public townwide discussion. So if we were doing that and everyone's ideas were valued, why do we need to know in that public forum, who owns the property? What does it matter? We're all there to share our ideas, to share our concerns, to share what we think would be best. We unfortunately also heard from a lot of pond property owners letting everybody know loud and clear that they did not want public access. I even think a couple of property owners thought it was just a pond association meeting because they were complaining about other pond people. So that was interesting. But it was unsettling to hear because this is a townwide issue, not a private issue. Even more concerning was that RD, the RDA was asked weeks in advance if they wanted the meeting on Zoom and they said it wasn't necessary. That alone speaks volumes. We had to scramble at the last minute just to make sure we had a recording. It was, I was blown away. Why wouldn't it be necessary to have that on Zoom? The pond is one of, if not the biggest topic that this town is talking about right now. So to say that we're going to have a public meeting about it and then say, sorry, we're not going to, you know, put it on where people at home can, you know, can chime in or can take a look or if someone is working, if one of you guys were working, you couldn't keep it on your phone. I was, I, I had no words about that. I was blown away. After the meeting, I actually went and spoke to the gentleman Kevin, Kevin from GZA. He was the one who put it on and I asked him why the questionnaires didn't go out to the entire town, but only to residents who own property on the town. He told me that because it would cost $15,000 to mail those questionnaires to everyone, he said the RDA did not want to spend that. So they used the Johnson Pond Civic Association's email list instead because it was easier and cheaper. How is that productive or inclusive? There are many clips floating around social media of people standing up and saying, you know, I still haven't even seen it, so I don't know what was on it. But there was a woman who stood up and said, they asked if we wanted a playground and I said no. They asked if we wanted a beach and I said no. Again, I have no words for this. It was cheaper and easier to you. And I don't mean this with any disrespect towards the Civic Association at all. But per this gentleman Kevin at GZA who ran that meeting and per the RDA's instructions, it was cheaper and easier for them to use their email listing than send out questionnaires to the town to see what everyone thought.
Brittany, you and I, and I, I think Brian in the back, we're the only people, oh, and I'm sorry, JP, we're the only people that not, that did not live on the pond.
Correct.
I believe. Can I just jump in right here? I think you guys can see that we're having conversations up here, which is what we want to do. First of all, we've never agreed with this RDA. That was all Angel. He is gone. And that's one of the big things. We have to roll our sleeves up because it doesn't make sense. There are people on this council that have some really great ideas. Unfortunately, we can't talk about them until we get in that workshop or hopefully sooner. So I want you to know that. That wasn't us. I kind of remember when Steve brought up the RDA and I asked him some questions. I was brand new. He said, nope, you can't meet them. Nope. You guys don't, you, 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 there's no talking with them. And I thought that was like a secret society, did not know anybody. He wouldn't tell us who was on it. So.
Respectfully though, then, like, wasn't that like red flag, you know, like?
I was, I'm like, okay, that's how it's run. I mean, how would they know? I'm brand new and these guys that were on for a while didn't question it either. I, I, first of all, who is, who at the time that Angel was here, who was governing RDA? Did Dan have anything to do with it? Because?
I have a really big background in this and I know a lot about this. No, I, I know what, okay, go ahead.
Can I finish my thought? Thank you. Because no one should have said, no, RDA doesn't have the right to say no to this town if the town wants to see it on Zoom. So I want to know who do you think gave that okay? Was Angel just running the whole thing?
You mean the okay for it not to be covered by Zoom?
Yes. How could RDA say no to that for our people that want, that wanted, couldn't make it there?
They're, they're a separate entity. They're, they're a separate entity. I, I don't know what transpired, but I think they were asked a long time before the meeting whether they wanted it covered and they said no. And then it was somebody scrambling the last.
Talk about this.
Day trying to pull something together, you know, if like, for instance.
It never came to us. That's what I'm saying. It never came.
It was designed.
And they, and they came to our.
Probably, yeah.
They came to our IT guy like a fire drill.
Because that morning, Ms. Broadbent, that morning I came across the agenda for the meeting and someone asked me where the Zoom link was and there wasn't one available.
No, there wasn't. No, there wasn't. You're right. And we believe it was designed that way.
All right, we just got to maintain our decorum, please. I know we're passionate about this issue.
You could take, Joanne, if you could take a note here, since we still don't know who's on RDA, really. We don't have any connection with them. Apparently, when they, when they launched their website, which took very, 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 very long to launch their website, they were asking for people to sign in with, I mean, email them with ideas that they wanted. I want to know how many emails came in, where they came from and what were their ideas? Because we don't have that information.
They don't have that information either. I asked Kevin that night and he said that he is not sure where they are stored.
Cody?
What?
So those submissions go to, I presume, the RDA or GZA. It's their website.
Website's not here.
They were created as a separate body politic almost from all of us. And I think we all agree we need to.
We all agree we need to.
So the purpose, the purpose of what I'm speaking about here is I want to know what was gained from that meeting or any meetings that they've had. I want to know what we've actually spent on them because nobody knows. Again, that's a secret, you know, Angel amount. And what, if anything, have they done for the money? Because I've seen a lot of meetings scheduling their next meetings, websites that have gone up, that are 10-minute websites to build, that take months to go, meetings that don't have agendas posted, so they're canceled. It's, it, who's, who's been really checking in on their progress? We're not getting any answers and it just seems like a big waste. Nothing is getting done.
Councilman.
Okay, let me roll back the clock on this.
Sure.
So pre-2024, when we added extra people to the council, one of the last orders of business that we were going to do was transfer the development rights from the town council to the RDA for Johnson's Pond. I had sent emails saying I did not want to do that. We had new people coming on council. I wanted them to understand what that actually meant because I did not agree with the pond going over to the RDA and I still do not. I think it's a huge waste of money. You're overcomplicating a very simple thing. People want to put a boat in the water, add some concrete at a 20-degree angle and put a placement in the park. That's what you need to do. That's it. And so this is, this, I felt, has been a overcomplicated problem from day one. But I've, and I've questioned it several times and I actually asked to hold the vote off until we had new council so I could make this very argument that this was not the way to go. But I didn't have the support. The previous solicitor had said that the, the RDA was the only way to do this and this and that. I disagreed wholeheartedly. I wanted to have a dam manager district isolate the costs to the residents of the pond and have them pay a small tax to be able to maintain the reservoir, pay for insurance. That was my idea that I wanted to do. I did not have the support to do it. And so, you know, this is one of the things that I want to look at changing soon. I, I agree with you about the RDA and I think that it's no surprise to me.
I don't mean any of this to be disrespectful at all.
I get it. I get it. And I, and I don't, does not surprise me that they're not any further along than they are because in my opinion, the RDA was basically just somebody that was going to spend $455,000, which is how much we gave them, to build a plan and we still don't have anything else. We could literally buy a piece of land for that kind of money and work on putting a boat ramp in instead of just spending 455 grand and saying, we need a boat ramp.
Right. Well, to be fair, it was another committee that Angel could send a bill to and get paid from.
You know, maybe, but my, my point is though, I, I don't, I, I hear the public on this. And as a pond resident, I want to see public access because, you know, even like, take the council side out of it. Take, take all, if I have people that I want to come out and, and, you know, visit me, I want to be able to get on the water and do that. It's, it's convenient for me to have public access as a resident. And I want the people of Coventry to enjoy the benefit that they now have. So, you know, I, I felt that this was an overcomplicated thing. It was going to take decades to get it done. And ultimately, it may never even happen because the price tag would be insane when we could just get a piece of land and put a boat ramp in. That's all we need to do. That's it. So that's what I've been pushing for, for years.
So with what Councilman Pasqua said, that's one of the priorities that are on our list. And it really does come down to how, who's going to be paying for it? And you have explained to me a million times, something that our previous solicitor would not allow us to do. I was brand new like a couple of weeks, but there was a lot of arguing going on and regarding the TIF district and the dam district. And I still want to be able to get experts in to explain, if, if, even if we need to explain it, because I think there's one way to do it and one way not to do it. And the way we're doing it right now is not the way to do it.
I just think it's really important right now to shut the RDA down as quick as we can to try to save as much as we can. Because if we're going to continue with this and have another one of these meetings with GZA making a mockery of it, whatever that meeting cost, I can tell you it was a lot.
I have a question for the solicitor. Where does, did GZA's contract come to us yet? I can't remember. It's still with. It's our. Okay. Can we start figuring out how to? Yeah.
We haven't been billed from GZA.
We would just need to reacquire development rights of Johnson's Pond, back to the town council.
If you can form something, you can unform it too.
Yeah.
I think that's an important first step. Thank you.
And just to kind of summarize all, all this stuff, the good thing is, as it stands right now, nothing's finalized on what we're doing or what the options are. In fact, even at that meeting, they stated none of this is binding as far as TIF or dam district or whatever. So although that may have been a bad idea, there's still time to save that process. And so I just wanted to mention that and good evening.
Going on, Brian Keesling. First off, Frank Brown. Congratulations, dude. Second off, JP. I read in the newspaper that you've been getting the unredacted statements all along. What do you plan to do about that with the Providence Journal spreading false information on your name, brother?
I have gotten them to make a correction to the electronic version, but I, I, I appreciate you having more journalistic integrity than perhaps others, so.
Thank you very much for that compliment, JP. I'd actually like to forward on that a little bit as well. Brittany brought up the Johnson's Pond meeting, which was atrocious. I went to a separate outbreak room with a young lady. First thing that she did was ask who was a owner and who had rights, right? And if you didn't, as my footage showed, you were treated very much differently, right? Not being allowed to ask questions or participate in the same magnitude as the other people. And it shocks me to see these people in these powers as well as officers in our department that know that not only are they were being recorded, but they're live in front of other viewers and they decide to act this way. The internet is written in ink, my friends, not pencil. You see what I mean? And it blows my mind. I had reached out to Dan Perillo when I had heard that that wasn't going to be live, right? And we're trying to figure out who okayed this, who okayed this. It was Dan Perillo. That's why I was itching in my pants back there. I had, I had learned of this and I had offered my services and he told me that my services weren't needed. I then found him at that meeting and he assured me that the meeting was live. I turned my camera on him and asked him to repeat that for my audience and he did what we know now today as the Danny Dance, trying to brush me off. I have showed an interest in pursuing this on a more professional magnitude. I have tried to discuss the idea of a stipend because of the hours that I do commit to doing this. Maybe we could build a more friendly, supportive relationship with each other. But the administration in this town just takes a personal disliking to me, as they always have, as I've always complained about, and the proof is in the pudding sitting behind me. As Cody is training, a third assistant that I have seen since I started documenting, I have seen a kid that was 16 or 17, I've seen a guy in his 40s back there, and each time we've had issues. And the issues keep on going. I think that I have shown that I am not only qualified, I personally own the gear and I've personally dedicated the time to make sure that these broadcasts are available to your public, not my public, right? And I'd like to see these issues addressed with Dan Brown. Furthermore, who bought that? I want a name. Who went on Amazon or whatever website and purchased that? I heard she said it was pretty loud and they gestured this table. So I'm going to assume that it was one of these girls that made that purchase and brought it here. Who set it up? Do you guys have any idea what this represents? Right? And in a time when people are taking away our public comment and suppressing us up here, right? I brought it up on my show. It's a little bit nerve wracking. I wear my sunglasses up here because to me, it makes me feel more comfortable, right? What you guys have probably seen my face before and I take them off and I get up here and, right? And it happens to everybody. That right there is a big show in their face that your time is coming down to an end. And whoever purchased that shows that we still have somebody in this administration that has no concern of our public comment or our thoughts as a community, that they just want to rush us. Now, I've also seen that not be used properly, which proves that it's also a distraction to the council. Now, from the, from the display that I have learned from Dan Perillo, as well as the Coventry Police Department teaching me what is acceptable behavior, I know for a fact I'm in my legal right to do this. Oh, I didn't know that rule. So from what I understand, though, I did not break it. I didn't vandalize it. I didn't, nothing. I merely tampered with it, or however you would phrase. Now, when Dan Perillo touched my personal gear, this was considered to be legal. That was purchased with town money and that's why I want to know who purchased it because somebody made the personal decision to F their public comment and we're going to go ahead and buy a public spectacle. Now, I have one of those in my store. I use it when I charge people for my hourly wage so that they know exactly what they're being billed for and I can stay transparent. I know exactly what that thing costs and it probably costs about $79.99. When we have so much tax money, you know, problems in this town, I don't think wasting money on antics is a good idea just so we can show the constituents that we still don't care about your public comment.
We never voted on having that here and there was some conversation at the beginning of the meeting and most of us said we didn't want it, Brian, so.
You will.
Thank you, Frank Brown.
If I, on, on the agenda, part of my rules, amendments to the rules is to eliminate the timer altogether and just use reasonable amount of time. I think what we're seeing right now is the department head still learning all of these new requirements that we're coming out with. They, they are, you can see it on the backend, like I see emails.
Heads if they're still learning though.
We are learning. We're setting the rules now is, I think, some of the problem.
But whoever bought that, though, maybe shouldn't be a department head because they're still apparently learning.
Brian, we're just trying things out. Nothing is set in stone. We're all new up here. We know that a couple of other towns do it. They also have like a sergeant. They also have sign-in sheets. So we're just going to try to see what sticks.
But those other towns aren't going through Hillary Lima taking away public comment and then.
But who was the one who brought public comment back? We did. I did. We're never going to get rid of that.
Right. We just don't want to remind the public.
It's just something we're trying. It, it's off, you shut it off. But just remember that in the, no, rarely, I don't know where that law. But just remember that in the, no, rarely, I don't know where that law is, but I, I know it's on our, um, our TC rules, right?
Yeah, there's a, a point in the rules that basically mention a general time limit, I think.
No, I'm talking about.
She's talking about the banister.
The banisters. You're not supposed to come up to here.
Inside the rail.
Inside the railing. That's it. Yeah.
But to your point, yeah, this was, uh, this, there's a lot of things we're working through at the moment.
It's not a good idea right now for Coventry. Maybe in another year or so, but right now with all that, I just don't think it's a good look and that's all. And we're spending money on it, you know what I mean? And it's just a show, you know? It's just a antique. What's gonna happen is somebody sits in that chair. They're not gonna be able to put it there no more.
We can return it.
Let me share that.
It's very easily returnable.
Hopefully, hopefully it's a 30 day, right? Hey, thank you guys for letting me share all that. You all have a good night. And again, Frank Brown. Congratulations, brother.
Thank you. Anybody else, uh, public comment in the room?
Sure. Just to clarify some points on the RDA meeting. It wasn't an administrative call. It wasn't Dan's call to not livestream. I always leave it up to the council or the committee that's meeting to see if they want livestream. I asked the RDA if they wanted to livestream. They said no. I didn't think of anything of it after that. Dan had nothing to do with it. No, I just asked and they.
Yeah, no, we know you did your part on that and, uh, you know, as we're learning, they're very separate. Uh, and perhaps by design, I'm sure.
So if I could just go on, day of, um, we got it set up. It wasn't livestreamed. It was recorded and I uploaded it to our YouTube channel right afterwards.
If I could just make a point that's completely different from anything we're talking about. You are speaking normal tone right now, standing at a good distance away from the microphone. I'd like you to note the time of the meeting, go back and listen to how you sound and ensure that we've corrected that that microphone can pick your voice up at the tone you're speaking and at the distance you are.
Fair enough.
Just to ensure that we've been going, I know there was a couple of emails about this sound. So I just noticed.
Actually, he's very soft.
He, but he's normal. Like, we're kind of project as we're experiencing it, but he's just monotone. So if we get someone up there who is, that mic should be able to pick it up. That's all I'm saying. Just like a little mental.
Yeah, understood. I think as of two town council meetings ago, we've corrected the issue on the outbound audio. Second point to the AV technicians' comment, that is a budgeted item, $6,000 a year. I've had a couple of different guys working for me. It's Marcus's first day. Hopefully he'll be sticking around. Um, again, there's a budgeted item that the council approved. We have over 800 streamed meetings that I've never been compensated for. And now we have an AV tech with a paid position and I'm very hoping to get my nights back.
What's his name? Sorry?
Yes.
Marcus, nice to meet you. Welcome.
So, thank you.
Are, are you, you're telling us you don't want to see us at night? That's really.
I'd rather see my daughter.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anybody else in the room before we go to Zoom? All right. Now that you're trained, Marcus, is anybody in Zoom? Good evening. Come on in, uh, take your cell phone from you and name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Stacy Nichols, 159 Lewis Farm Road. Um, yeah, I meant to be able to comment during documented items. I was still working though. Um, I first off want to say I appreciate the tone of tonight's meeting. I for sure did not agree with many of the decisions that were voted on. But it was very nice to hear some in-depth questions asked. And I am all for, you know, nothing should ever be going the way one person in town sees. Um, but there should definitely be middle ground found. So I feel like there has been progress in that. And I think, um, just in the situation we're at, we should be pointing out those types of situations when we see them. Um, you know, that we are trying to move forward. So positive there. Um, a question actually my husband has had is that, um, Hillary's emails should be, uh, saved somewhere. Um, and is that information going to be available when comparing, um, any sort of audit that might be happening? Those, um, the town should have a policy as far as how long official emails are saved on your server. So that's something just to consider. Also, um, so the thing I wanted to bring up was, um, GZA with future planning for the playgrounds, um, much like Brittany has already mentioned, many concerns. Um, I've actually participated through Zoom, as I often have to, because I'm usually working still until 6:00, 6:30 at night. Participating in RDA meetings was very disappointed in the fact that Zoom was not listed as an option. Was very grateful. I believe it was JP Verducci who got back to me first about scrambling to try to get Zoom there. Shout out to Brian who did show up. I was able to at least listen to the meeting through his livestream. Um, because I didn't know where to find the Zoom link to the RDA meeting. Um, I have asked at RDA meetings, um, what we've spent for GZA. No answer, other than not much. Um, and as far as what Jonathan just said a few minutes ago, I mean, I've actually had a conversation with you, Jonathan, on the phone about like, you know, there being a beach and there being other things. I definitely remember you making videos about this stuff. And now we're back to like, you're gonna get a concrete boat ramp, which is not at all what was originally told to people. So feeling like, um, I don't even like, I, I can't even process that really because, like, I've, I've spoken to you and now we're to concrete boat ramp from beach with pavilion and kayak rentals. So that's kind of like a really big jump. Um, as far as who made the RDA, those were council appointed seats. Like, people applied to be on the RDA because there was a seat open and people were pushing me to be on it. And I laughed that the town council would never approve me to be on the RDA, considering my feelings that there should be actual public access for people. Which, looking at the public meeting and what happened, I think we can all agree that someone actually pushing for real public access would not have fit in with that group. Um, so now we voted yes to give GZA more money on a different project. And if I heard Maria correctly, we haven't even been billed by GZA for any of the work they've done. I mean, this is just like another solicitor situation where we're gonna get, what, a year's worth of bills at once? And it's like, the more I hear, the more I just wonder how people have sat on town council and this has been going on. Like, I just can't imagine, you don't know what you're paying and RDA has been meeting for months with GZA. And you've just been accumulating bills. Like, how do you know if you're in budget? How does anyone know if you're in budget? You haven't even gotten billed yet. And yet you just voted to approve to give them more money on a different project. With a verbal assurance from Parks and Rec that they're gonna do it. So maybe we could use a little more progress in that area. But again, let's do the peanut butter sandwich and go back to the positive that, you know, I think Frank Brown is gonna hopefully bring some change and I, I feel like we have some good communication going. But other than that, I feel like I need a cold rag for my head. And that's really all I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Uh, Councilman Pasqua.
Yeah, just, uh, Stacy, thank you for your comments. I just, um, I want to address a couple of things that were mentioned there. RDA is definitely council appointed, but the RDA's sole mission is not Johnson's Pond. The RDA has a, has a purpose of redeveloping blighted areas, which I don't feel is an appropriate fit for Johnson's Pond. What I feel is an appropriate fit for is like the Kmart and Almac's parking lot and those areas. And those places getting redone and fixed and making a downtown and a main street. And, you know, that's what the purpose of an RDA is. And it has a very good use if it's used properly for the right reasons within the town of Coventry. So, um, the, it is, the RDA is council appointments, but it doesn't have one job and it was not intended to have one job. But unfortunately, so far, that's all it has. Uh, the other thing is, uh, Stacy, you're 100% right. I absolutely told you that and, and I've said it before on the record. And the reason for that is because that's what I was told was coming. Not because it's not exactly what I wanted. I, when the solicitor and the RDA went through all this, I was surprised to hear about bathhouses and beaches and pavilions because we own a beach and we have not had it open for five years. We are really bad at running beaches, plain and simple. We can't, we can't keep them going. So it baffled me to understand why we needed another one. We have a beach at Breezy Lake that nobody uses, that's a town owned beach. And then we don't use that. So it really didn't make sense to me where we were gonna put it, how we're gonna operate it. But I was told, yep, the people want bathhouses, beaches and pavilions. I think Councilman in the blank was big on that. And I'm like, okay, I mean, I've been with these association for years. I've never heard anybody ask me for a shower room. And I've never had anybody ask me for a kayak rentals on Johnson's Pond, ever. Always, always said they wanted access to the larger side of the reservoir to be able to put boats in. That's, I've, I've got 100 emails on those. Never had one about a beach. But at the time when we had this conversation, the, um, tide of the council and the tide of the legal team was very different. And the focus was a massive project like Scobro Beach or something, I don't even know, for Johnson's Pond. And I said, okay, I mean, that's what everybody else wants. So we'll do it. But the reality is, in my opinion, and been dealing this for a long time, and people outside of the reservoir and on the reservoir have reached out to me many times. They've generally all asked me the same thing. When are we getting a boat ramp? When are we getting access? So, I mean, if the public wants a beach, then so be it. And that's what they get. But I just will tell you for sure with confidence that that's not been the temperature of the town. Um, is there anything else that I wanted to put on there? That's it. That, so those are the big things I just want to address. So, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman?
Um, I just wanted to, um, mention that, uh, Stacy, you kept saying that we just gave GZA some more money for the, um, Parks and Rec. Well, I understand, I read the resolution several times, that money is not from the town. It's from a grant that they got. Correct? Everybody?
And if I may, GZA is a big company. Yeah, there, there are so many consulting.
Different departments, yeah.
That have different, you know, like, we work a lot with Fussin' O'Neill. I work with, you know, a group that, we've got a group that looks at dams. We've got a group that looks at stormwater. GZA is the same way. There, it's not like the same people. It's, it's a big firm.
But you can say, I mean, I can understand why those, that would get crossed. But, you know, I think in general, they have something to prove on this contract. And obviously, this is a very, uh, passionate issue. This isn't gonna go away. I think in general, we need to move the debate from, uh, what we're not gonna do to what we are gonna do. And, um, you know, uh, we definitely have some deep considerations to make. And, uh, we gotta look at the authority that was, uh, used to enable them, uh, and make the next steps. It's just another item for us to, to put on. And then eventually, we've got to prioritize this. It's only, uh, you know, so many fires we can put out even with two firemen.
Big time. Thank you for that.
All right, um, public comment. Anybody else on Zoom? All right. New guy says we're good. All right. That will do it for public comment. We still got a couple of other things to do here. So moving along to item number 11. Item A, proposed easement between the town of Coventry and Domenico Pocozzi, owner of this parcel of land situated off Hope Furnace Road, 34 acres. Um, presently sits at Washington Oak Elementary. Good evening.
Thank you. Once again, good evening, Mr. President, Madam, gentlemen. I represent Domenico Pocozzi. Uh, Mr. Pocozzi resides on, um, Hope Furnace Road. Uh, his home abouts, uh, an additional eight acres. Those eight acres were part of a larger 43 acre posse. Um, his father, a dear friend of mine, unfortunately passed at the age of 58. Um, prior to his passing, he made a generous donation to the town of 35 acres for the purpose of, uh, the construction of the elementary school. He certainly would have been financially better off, uh, being in the construction business, cutting a road and doing subdevelop, uh, subdivision development. But he loved the town. Um, he did reserve the eight acres. He has four children, uh, all of whom I'm very fond of and close with, and hoped one day to build a home for each of his four children, abiding his own. Um, but that's not the way it turned out. And being an old fashioned gentleman, it was a handshake deal that was eventually gonna get papered. But the, that, that wasn't the good Lord's plan. And again, we lost him at age 58. So this evening, what we are seeking is an easement over that driveway, um, to access, um, those, um, eight acres. Um, I've spent, um, multiple months working with your solicitor, Mr. Igliosi, to try to craft something that's very limited and very protective of the town's interests. Um, and, uh, I, I'm here to answer any questions about it. And also, if, um, Mr. Igliosi, of course, would, uh, cares to address any aspects of the concerns that he raised, um, be certainly free to.
I, um, I am so happy that this is finally going through. And is Dominic here?
He is, yes. Uh, is it okay if I ask him to come up?
Yeah. And his wife? Hi, I'm so excited to meet you two. Um, thank you. Um, I want to thank Day, uh, our solicitor for his hard work because he's been punted all this stuff. So I'm so excited, um, that this is finally happening for you. I, like, I want to say I apologize for what's happened, but there is no, I can't apologize for that man, okay? We all know what we're talking about here. Um, but we're, we have a new man. We, we are moving forward. And, um, nothing like this will ever happen again. I'll tell you that much. Not under our watch. So I am happy and, um, you guys may all, um, have your thoughts, but I'm motion to, um, are we, are we voting on this? What are we doing?
I got a question.
Everyone, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote yes on this, first of all, and then you guys can ask your questions. So thank you guys for hanging in there. Appreciate it.
All right, we have a preemptive non-motioned vote from Councilwoman Capaldi. I'm new at this, but I feel like that may be a challenge. Uh, Councilwoman Brown?
Uh, just a quick question. Um, wasn't Brian Banford involved with that property with your father when the school was donated to the town?
Uh, ye- yes, Brian and Mike, uh, we're partners at the time.
Yeah, and I, you know, I knew Brian. I knew your dad. I know you two, Dominic. And, uh, you know, so you said, you know, God rest Brian Banford's soul because he died at a young age too and, uh.
Absolutely, sir.
Going on up there, but, uh, this is a good use of the property too. So I, it's, it's a good thing. So I just wanted to kind of bring up Brian Banford's name and his contributions to the town too, so.
Thank you for that. And I was remiss for not pointing that out. Um, the loss of Dominic's father was tragic to me. I also considered Brian a friend. And I did come to learn that, uh, a few years after Michael's death, we lost Brian as well. But both of them thought highly of the town and were part of that contribution. Absolutely.
Councilman Hall?
If I may, I'll be really quick. Um, I noticed looking at the plans, the easement, you're gonna branch off to the right as you enter the road going up to the school.
That's correct, sir.
Um, is there any protections? Maybe someone from the town can answer. Uh, you guys are gonna have large equipment going over that road. Is there any, like, if there's any, if that initial portion there is torn up, is the easement gonna be responsible for that?
Sure, that, that's a great question. And those were issues, uh, raised by your attorney. And at this juncture, the easement only gives us to pass and repass. Um, it is very narrowly drafted so that we cannot open a road. Um, um, we are subject to all restrictions in the town that any other person would be if they endeavored to develop. Um, and yes, um, we, we are responsible for and have the right to maintain it, uh, too. But under the auspices of your town authorities.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. I think we may have a motion from someone.
That would be me.
Me? We have a motion, uh, to grant the easement. Uh, got it right here. The proposed easement, uh, easement, excuse me, uh, 34.27 acres of pond that presently sits Washington Oak Elementary School. This is tax assessed as plat 90 lot 15. We have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hool?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Thank you. Do your time.
Thank you. Mr. President, just for the record, that was um Resolution 202511 that was added by the clerk.
We didn't have that number in here.
I know that was not on your agenda, but it was, that's the number.
Thank you very much. Do we record that, madam?
Point of clarification, do um, does Mr. Micosi have to sign the easement as well? Okay, would it uh be possible for him to s- sign it this evening and, okay, thank you. Thank you all.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate your patience. All right. We're getting there. One more. Uh, we have got Letterby, approval of Narragansett Electric in Verizon, New England, to be granted permission to locate, maintain, uh, maintain poles, wires, fixtures, including the necessary uh to sustain and protect fixtures. Uh, in particular, we're looking at Red Look, Red Brook Lane, installing uh new P3-50 uh on a public way to prove to be new residential development. And then Beach Street, we've got the old uh 10-foot Helix anchor on P1, which uh we've obviously all discussed many times.
I'll make a motion to approve Narragansett Electric in Verizon, New England, granting them permission uh for Red Brook Lane installing new P350 and also on Beach Street installing a new Helix anchor on P1.
Nice.
That was good. I'll second that.
Teachable, guys. Teacher.
All right, we have first and a second. Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
All right, last item on the agenda. Have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a second. Gentlemen? I.
We stand adjourned.